To our Tuesday, December fifth, city council meeting and workshop session. We're going to go ahead and start with our workshop that has a bunch. Talking about development code amendments coming up, but just real quick, let's do a quick attendance check for workshop. Go around the dais here, Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy, welcome. So I'm not sure about Mayor Pro Tem Foliar, so we will know when he arrives. Lisa, you're on.
Thank you. Can we call up the presentation, please? Thank you. So this is actually the public hearings. We workshopped these hearings last week. I'm going to try and go very, very quickly because we want to try and get through this, but I want to just kind of tee this up a little bit for you. Next slide, please. So tonight, we're doing public hearings on the sign code amendments. Those are Greenstone initiated. Also, utility local distribution facilities as limited use. That's a city initiated. Amendment fencing standards for essential public facilities and utilities, also city initiated. And finally, River District Landscape Standards, which is a Greenstone initiated amendment. Next slide, please. Oh, and I do want to point out that while we will be workshopping the River District Open Space Zone Change later this evening to give you the facts of the case, the hearing will not actually happen until December nineteenth. And so, and we'll remind the public of that this evening at seven o'clock as well, so. But, and just, just to be clear about the order of proceedings with the, with these public hearings. So each of these, each of these four topics are going to start with a staff presentation, followed by the applicant testimony where for the two Greenstone initiated applications, followed by public testimony, then we're going to ask council to deliberate on these so that you can give me direction. You're not adopting these, but you do need to give me direction so that I can bring back ordinances. And so, so we are asking that you approve, approve with modifications or deny. When you do that, it's not official until you actually adopt the ordinance.
Right. Real quick, Lisa, if I may, but in Kelsey, if you can note, Mayor Pro Tem has joined us. Thank you.
And next, next slide, please. So I covered the procedural summary at our last work, set of workshops. We've gone through the full procedure, et cetera. We've done all the noticing requirements. We have had numerous public workshops with the Planning Commission. We held a public hearing with the, with the Planning Commission for the zone change. We also had a hearing before the hearing examiner. So this has been out there and in the public a lot. Next slide, please. For all four cases, the Planning Commission made the following findings. The SEPA review has been completed on the proposed amendments. All public agency and notice requirements were met and accomplished in a timely manner. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation, as was demonstrated by the previous slide. And the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify at a public hearing before the Planning Commission. They've also had the opportunity, this, this hearing tonight has been noticed. They have had the opportunity to submit comments. For the four hearings that we have tonight, there have been no public comments received. So I just want you to be aware of that, but they did have the opportunity to do so. Next slide, please. So I also just want to remind you once about the criteria for amending development code. This is established by city code. And so such amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. Such amendment or a change in economic, technological or land use conditions has occurred to warrant a modification. It is found that an amendment is necessary to correct an error. It is found that an amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is found that amendment is necessary to provide for a use or uses that have not previously been addressed. Or, and or is an important word, because any of these are justification for making an amendment. Or the amendment as deemed, has been deemed as necessary by city council as being in the public interest. So those are the, those are the basis for approving an amendment to the development code. Next slide, please. So we're going to jump right into the, the Greenstone initiated code amendments to signage standards. Next slide, please. Now, this does apply to the sign standards citywide. There are not special sign standards for the River District. And Greenstone did initiate it. They started out proposing changes to, to, to create a sign code just for the River District. And after some, some staff discussions and some advice from our legal counsel, they went back to a proposing just amendments to the citywide sign code. Just in summary, they're proposing that signs under eight square feet are, they're proposed to be exempt. Also, they're proposing to increase the size of commercial signage in residential zones, increasing the size of permitted commercial real estate signage, and creating a new category of sign, signage for temporary land development, which is in addition to real estate signs. And they've also proposed to increase the size and height of blade signs. Next slide, please. So we identified a number of inconsistencies, implementation and enforcement challenges. I'm not going to go into them in detail as I did at the workshop, but just, just as a reminder, there's several sign types that are listed, both as, are as listed as exempt, but then with limitations on time, manner, and placement. Creates a problem for enforcement because I don't know when the sign was put up. So how can you, how can you regulate how long it's up if I have no information about when that sign was put up in place? Several sign types are also listed as both exempt and permitted. Streetlight banners are proposed to be exempt on HOA streetlights. So without a permit or any other mechanism to evaluate the structural soundness. Again, that, that hasn't been provided in this code. It's not that this is not a good idea, but it's not ready for prime time. Exemptions for less than eight square foot signs have the potential to cause a proliferation of small signs, particularly in the right of way, and we all know the fun, the fun and games we have with political signs. Let's open it up to all signs. New category of, they, they've also proposed a new category of temporary land development signs that has a significant potential to cause a proliferation of large signs. And the proposed changes to the blade signs, having them larger and higher than what was originally proposed, would tend to make them more auto oriented. And again, it's something worth considering, but it should be considered within a larger context. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to remind you of this one exhibit that I have. This is the, the recently recorded binding site plant, Centennial Country Vista Binding Site Plan. And the red, the red blocks up there are all the places where a thirty-two square foot real estate sign is already allowed. The green, the green symbols up there indicate a sixty-four square foot sign. Now, picture your garage door. That's the size of a sixty-four square, square feet. Those are the additional temporary land development signs that would also be allowed in addition to the real estate signs. Next slide, please. And I share that with you because while there were a number of, of potentially relevant comp plan goals and policies, there were several that seemed to be in conflict with, mostly with the, the potential for proliferation of signs. Urban design goal number one, maintain the urban village character and scenic resources of the community. Urban design policy number eight, continue to implement and strengthen standards for the scale and intensity of commercial signs that protect views and minimize signage clutter while still allowing adequate business identification. Urban design policy nineteen, maintaining design standards and land use plans for neighborhood centers, community centers, and the central business district that are based on the following principles. And the one that applies is should signs be regulated, or signs should be regulated to reduce glare and other adverse visual impacts on nearby residents without limiting their potential to contribute to the color and character of the center. And finally, urban design policy number twenty, maintain specific regulations for designated aesthetic corridors and bat, boulevards that limit site, sign height and size. Next slide, please. So while it's not common that we do this, as you know, we have in our budget that you're going to be considering later this evening, a proposal to fund a consultant to help us overhaul our entire sign code to deal with the content neutrality. Because there were some, in some cases, there, some of these had the potential to exacerbate the problems with content neutrality in our sign code. In others, they just seem to be in conflict with our city code. And still others have implementation challenges that could be worked through, but are, again, are not ready for prime time right now. So staff recommended that these proposed amendments be deferred for potential consideration resolution as part of the 2024 Sign Code Amendment Process. Next slide, please. Planning Commission made the following conclusions, that the proposed amendment is not consistent with the comp plan and is detrimental to the public welfare. The proposed amendment is not warranted by a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is, is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed, and the proposed amendment is not deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Next slide, please. So on the basis of, of those conclusions, the Planning Commission recommended that, that these amendments not be approved at this time. Next slide, please. And now is an opportunity for the applicant to testify, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, members of the council, Mike Terrill, testifying for the applicant. I'm going to make it very short. We went through a very exhaustive process working with staff. As Lisa mentioned, we, we went from identifying a River District specific sign code, which initially in the original SAP, we were proposing, but were convinced by staff at that time that was not necessary. And that, that those issues would be resolved through the sign code for the city overall. So a number of issues signage wise have come up over time. We're proposing resolution to those in the amendments this year. And so staff said, hold on, let's not do a River District SAP specific sign code because it'll be challenging for staff to manage two different sign codes. We understand the challenges for staff along that way, but we, we also emphasize that River District has a specific area plan. It's unique. And the sign code regulations for the city are, are overall for River District as well, which is, is different than other sections of the code. Landscape is different. The zoning is different for River District. So in collaboration with staff, we shifted our focus to doing amendments to the existing, the overall city sign code. So we identified a number of different areas that we thought were important. Went through an exhaustive process, not only with staff, but with the Plan Commission and worked through this. And as, as Lisa noted, came out of the Planning Commission process is not recommended. So one of the things we're doing here tonight is not going to, to relitigate the whole thing with the Plan Commission. We recognize that there are some challenges. We think there are some very important elements within our recommendations that need to be considered. And we would, we would hope that you take a look at those and give staff some direction down the road to carry those forward for discussion in the, in the sign code as it gets reviewed in 2024 or into 2025. And we'll be back to, to talk about those specific issues at that time. So we appreciate your consideration. We think there's some, some great ideas within our recommendations. And we think some of those, if not all of them, should be carried forward and discussed in more detail. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Next slide, please. Now is the time for the public to provide testimony. If we have any members of the public who would like to testify.
So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the sign code amendments. Is that what you're looking for, Lisa? Or not? Oh, we, oh, you didn't open it? Well, okay. Okay, well, I usually call out when it starts, so. No, that's okay. So do we have anybody here in chambers or online who'd like to make any public testimony on this item, which is the proposed sign regulation changes? Is there anybody online looking to make a comment? Not at this time?
Don't see anybody, no.
Okay, thank you. And it doesn't look like we have anybody in chambers, so we'll go ahead and close that at six eighteen.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So now we're asking you to give me some direction. In your deliberations, you'll, you'll, you should make a motion to approve, approve with modifications or deny. And as part of that, you certainly can, as staff suggested, defer the consideration of these to be part of the, the sign code ordinance.
Councilmember Dunn.
Madam Mayor, I move that the amendments be moved to the 2024 Sign Code Consideration.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Van Orman. Any discussion on the proposed, on the motion to postpone these until the 2024 review? I don't see any. All right, not hearing any comments. All in favor of supporting the motion to move the Sign Code Regulation Amendments to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Review? Is that correct, Lisa? I want to make sure I got it right.
No, no, the 2024 Sign Code.
Sign Code, 2024 Sign Code Amendments. Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, looks like that motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Can I have the presentation brought back up, please?
So I guess we'll, let me go ahead and start, open it now. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for River District SAP landscaping regulations. Is that what you got up?
No, the next one is public utility and local distribution.
Sorry, I was going in this order here.
I, I'm sorry. We, we switched this up because Amy was going to do the landscape, but she has a sick child. So I'm going to be covering them all now, so.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open the, the public hearing for the landscape regulations.
Public utility and local distribution.
Thank you. Now we got to the right slide. For public utility, local distribution facility as limited use. Thank you. Six twenty.
Next slide, please. So again, I just want to, I, I want to share with you, a public utility, local distribution facility is any building structure or device which transfers directly to the public, the surface or supply by a public utility, including telephone, electric, less than sixty feet in height. So these are not like mega substations, but little substations. Gas, cable, television, water, and sewer, and all other facilities, equipment and structures necessary for conducting a local distribution service by a local government or public facility or public utility. And again, think water tanks and sewer lift stations. And these are facilities that need to be located where they need to be located. So under our current code, we require a conditional use permit for these types of facilities. Next slide, please. So as a conditional use permit, it requires a hearing before the hearing examiner, much more costly for the applicant, which by the way, is your utility, so it's much more costly for you, the users. It's much more time consuming for staff. It's much less timely decision process. And ultimately taxpayers and utility customers pay for the additional cost. And you have to realize that even if we, it goes to a hearing examiner, any conditions imposed need to be premised on city code standards and policies and/or mitigation of negative impacts. That's the only basis that those conditions can be placed on a conditional use permit. Next slide, please. So we are proposing to go instead to a limited use permit process. It's, there's no public hearing required. It's less costly, more, more efficient process. But it's, it is still subject to SEPA and public, and thus public comments to identify impacts and mitigations. And again, even with the limited use process, any conditions imposed need to be premised on city code standards and policies and/or mitigation of negative impacts. So it's, we get to the same place with a much more streamlined and less costly process. Next slide, please. So we're proposing, these local distribution facilities are currently listed as conditional uses in all zones except the open space zone where they're not permitted at all. We're proposing to change those limited uses, or those conditional uses to limited uses. So it's a change in the zoning matrix. Next slide, please. It also, next slide, please, also in the River District. And what we're proposing is the limited use standards in each of the zone categories where it would be allowed would be the same as what it is now under the conditional use. That is to say that the utility shall secure the necessary property or right of way to assure for the proper construction maintenance and general safety of properties abutting the public utility, local distribution facility. So already required. And we're proposing that the utility shall comply with all landscaping and screening requirements as detailed in City Development Code ten three C, unless a valid public safety and security reason for not installing said landscaping can be demonstrated by the utility. So again, we have an out for, and there are times when, when that is problematic. Think utility substations where they need a separation between trees and the, and the fencing, et cetera, from a safety standpoint. The utility, and we've also added this condition that the utility shall implement all mitigation measures as may be identified through SEPA review for the project as a condition of permitting. Now, that's kind of a belt and suspenders thing because they have to do that anyhow. But what it's doing is it's kind of mirroring the same clause that we have in the conditional use permit that then the hearing examiner can impose these conditions on yet. So it just kind of mirrors what we already have in conditional use. Next slide, please. And then for all of the zoning districts where this is allowed today as a conditional use, we simply strike the language from the conditional use section of that zoning chapter. Next slide, please. So there were a number of relevant comp plan goals and policies that were identified. I'm not going to read them all to you, but they are in the, your packet. Next slide, please. Next slide. The Planning Commission found the following, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. The proposed amendment is warranted by a change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. It's not necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is necessary to provide for a proposed, proposed use that was not previously addressed. And it is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. And the next slide, please, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this proposed amendment. So with that, it's now an opportunity for public comment.
All right, well, first, do we have questions? Questions from the council on this one? Councilmember Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Lisa, I think it was a second, I think it was a second item, the second thing that was brought up there. Reference to less costly, is that in reference to the city or the utilities?
So it, so it's, it, it is, the cost is borne by the utility and ultimately their rate payers or their taxpayers, as the case may be. And so, so yes, it is costly. We don't reap the benefit of that cost because it's, we're paying for a hearing examiner and hearing, in those hearing examiners, fees are several thousand dollars. It's a lot of process for an outcome that is virtually the same.
So what you're saving is, is staff time.
Staff time and you're also saving the utility.
Yeah.
Cost as well.
Thank you for that clarification.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other questions for Lisa before we go to public comment on this one? All right, so at this time, we'll take any public comment on this specific proposed amendment with regards to public utility, local distribution facilities as a limited use in all zones. We have anybody here in chambers who'd like to comment on this item or anybody online? Not seeing any? All right, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing at six twenty-seven.
And next slide, please, we'll go into deliberations. And again, we're asking for you to make a motion to approve, approve with modifications or deny.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn.
Madam Mayor, I move that the proposed amendments be moved forward for approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kennedy. Any further discussion by the council before I go to a vote? Not seeing any? All right, those all in favor of approving this, this change to the comprehensive plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
Okay.
Now we're going to go on to fencing standards for essential public utility, or essential, essential public facilities and utilities.
We'll go ahead and open the, this hearing at six twenty-eight.
So just, just by way of preface, this is city initiated, but we were actually approached by Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District regarding this particular request. And shortly thereafter, we also got a request from PD that was very similar. And so again, when we're talking about essential public facilities and utilities, one of the things that happened after nine eleven is that we became aware that terrorists very often target things that are essential to the operation of our community, not the least of which is electrical substations, water supplies, sewer supplies, or sewer services, et cetera. But, but, and it, and it has become a thing that we have to be vigilant about. Next slide, please. Our current standards don't really allow for security fencing, chain link fencing, or barbed wire fencing, specifically in the city's development code. Barbed wire or razor wire and chain link is, is, is prohibited. While the barbed, barbed wire and razor wire are prohibited in all zones, chain link is prohibited in residential zones. And so all we're proposing is, is to add a qualifier to this statement. These prohibitions shall not apply to essential public facilities and utilities, including but not limited to sewage treatment facilities, wells, water towers, lift stations, electrical substations, distribution and transmission facilities, and other critical public infrastructure. Again, that, that eliminates the challenge that we have right now. Next slide, please. Now, River District's regulations are a little more complicated on fences and walls. So barbed wire or razor wire is prohibited in all zones. Chain link is allowed with some exceptions for, for certain, in certain zones or in cert, for certain types of uses. And, but long story short, next slide, please. We're still proposing the same language for those regulations, that these prohibitions shall not apply to essential public facilities and utilities. Again, to allow for the security measures that are necessary. Next slide, please. So again, numerous relevant comp plan goals and policies. Next slide, please. Planning Commission made the following conclusions, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. It is warranted by a change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions. It is not necessary to correct an error. It is not necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed. And it is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. And with that, the Planning Commission recommended approval for this. So do you have, y'all have any questions for me?
It doesn't look like it.
And then public testimony is next on the docket.
Yep, so we'll go again. If anybody has any public comment on this specific recommendation from the Planning Commission, please speak now or forever hold your peace. Online too. I don't see anybody, and it doesn't look like we have anybody here in chambers. So I guess we'll move ahead to motion.
Next slide, please.
Oh, okay, oh, you said next slide, so. Councilmember Dunn has his hand up.
Madam Mayor, I, I move that the fencing standards be moved forward for approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further? Do we have any further discussion before we go to a vote? All right, not hearing any, all in favor of approving the fencing standards um proposed, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero.
And for our last hearing of the evening, next slide, please. River District Landscape Ordinance Amendments. Um, now, these were Greenstone initiated um amendments to the landscape standards within the River District. Next slide, please. Um, the majority of these are edits or and or additions to existing provisions to provide clarity, um, including encouraging the use of existing landscaping, clarifying the method for calculating required plantings around parking lots, buildings, driveways, utilities and other infrastructure, substituting existing interior parking lot alternative for the city's existing language, um, and clarifying fencing materials and reducing required tree caliber. Now, many of these are consistent with um changes that we did to the city development code related to landscaping back in twenty nineteen. And so it's moving more in the direction of consistency with the city's development code uh with this regard. Next slide, please. Again, a number of relevant comp plan goals and policies were identified and we can flip to the next, through the next two as well. A lot of policies were relevant to this. Next slide, please. Um, so staff analysis. So Greenstone and the city met after the first Planning Commission workshop. Um, Greenstone per change, proposed changes to street tree section. One of the things that we did as part of the um twenty nineteen amendments, we changed it, the street trees in city development code and River District Development Code and Engineering Design Standards. And um, uh, we, we felt that the proposed changes in Greenstone's uh landscape standards as it related to street trees were valuable additions, and so we also recommended incorporating them into the city's development code as it relates to street trees to, to maintain consistency. We will also be doing that for engineering design standards when we get around to updating our engineering design standards, but code cat carries more weight than standards, so. Um, so we're okay with that and we'll, we can do those all together. Next slide, please. Um, now, the Planning Commission, uh, when they reviewed these uh amendments, uh, uh, determined that the amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to public welfare. It is warranted by a change in economic, technological or land use conditions. It is necessary to correct an error. It is necessary to clarify a meeting or intent. It is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed. And it is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. And with that, they recommended approval. Now, I want to pause there for a second because since that time, uh, Greenstone is proposing to amend their amendment. Planning Commission has not seen those amendments yet. So what is before you is what the Planning Commission recommended. If you choose to, if you choose to go with the proposed amendments that Greenstone is going to present to you, um, you're going to need to make a motion to modify. Now, you can vote to approve as is, you could vote to modify, you also could vote to remand it back to Planning Commission, and they could consider it at their December meeting and we could bring it back on the nineteenth. Or you could um, or you could vote to deny it.
Any questions?
So with that, um, the next, uh, any questions for me before we let the applicant go forward?
We've got Councilmember Cargill.
Lisa, quick question. Um, the, the, the tree section in particular, does it dictate the, the type of trees that are gonna be in certain areas? And the reason why I'm asking this question is because we're having the issue in so many neighborhoods of the tree roots pushing up sidewalks. So is, is this trying to address that problem as well?
So what we did back in twenty nineteen actually did a lot to address that. And so now the trees are required to have either a deep root watering system or root barriers. That's number one. Number two is that we, we widened the area, the planting area for the trees. Um, and we limit whether it's class one or class two or class three trees based upon the amount of width that's available for that planting. So those are the things that we did back in twenty nineteen to help with that specific issue related to the street trees. Um, so, so I, and I think that um, we do, we do have some standards for street trees, but we do not have an exhaustive list. We list the types of trees that are approvable or are not approvable and, and the characteristics of trees that we're looking at. So species come and species go and they change and what's available changes and whatnot. So one of, actually talking with Washington, one of Washington State's arborists, they actually recommended that best practice was not to have a definitive list, but to instead focus on characteristics.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Lisa? Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned that widen the spacing. You're talking about the, the width of the spacing because there's, you're limited spacing between the curb and the sidewalk.
That, so, so the width between, the width of the planting area between the curb and sidewalk determines whether or not they can have a class two or a class three tree.
Okay.
Um, or a class one tree. So, so it's, so, so that's what dictates what type, what, what class of tree they can use. And that's the classification has to do with size of the tree.
Is it also a recommendation to widen the width of the tree? Lengthwise?
Um, yeah, you, so the code already, the code already has separation distances based upon the type of tree. Yeah, so if, if it's a bigger tree, the spacing is much greater.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lisa? All right, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of Council, Mike Terrill, landscape architect, uh, representing the applicant, Greenstone Corporation. Next line. The, uh, as Lisa noted in the beginning, I talked previously, River District, uh, when River District Specific Area Plan was created, it has own landscape standards. And so over time, and, and I've been involved in the overtime um, since the beginning of, of the city, we, we've looked at the standards both in River District and also collaborated with the city in terms of what the city's standards are as well. And there's been a lot of back and forth in terms of conversations about those standards and, and a lot of uh good information is transferred between the River District standards and the city standards and vice versa. And I would say, um, one of the things that's been great about this process and, and the synergy you have in front of you tonight is the collaboration that we have had with, with staff. Because one of the, one of the most important things is to get a plan in front of staff that they can understand what it is that they're seeing and the landscape architect that's submitting understands what the city is, is requiring. And so a lot of that conversation, and it's a communication issue. It's like, how do we communicate as landscape architects and developers to the city that this is what we would like to achieve? And how's the city saying this is what the standards are for the city? And so we only have one minor change or a clarification, and we just wanna, wanna make sure that that communication continues to happen. And it's unfortunate that Amy's not here tonight because we spent a lot of time with Amy talking about this and it's been really productive. So next slide. So in Article ten dash three C, uh, buried in the, under the spacing and location and the questions were really great about how do you come up with the trees? How, what's the spacing? The uh, the width of spacing that's standard for River District is six feet. So there's six feet between the back of the curb and the sidewalk to allow as much room as possible and, and makes sense and also create space for trees because soil volume is really important for the success of trees. And one of the things I wanna, wanna add on to what Lisa mentioned as well is the city standards for watering systems and root barriers is applied to River District as well. So those standards apply to the River District. And so those have evolved over time as well to try and eliminate some of those challenges that you have with sidewalks. And we also select trees that work within those spaces. Now, the challenge is that supplies of trees is ridiculously complicated because in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, a bunch of nurseries in Oregon went out of business. And so the supply of trees has, has been really difficult. And so we don't always know what trees we're gonna get, so we work very closely with the city to get the, get the right trees and, and get a variety of trees. Um, and our, our types of trees are being restricted all the time. And so right now, there is a threat to ash trees. It's an emerald ash borer. And so we're starting to take those trees off the table, which was a whole selection of trees that added to the urban uh, the urban forestry canopy because of the threat, because they're in Oregon now. They'll be here, so we're, we're balancing what we know and what the threats are to the urban forestry and creating diversity. So we don't have a situation that, that some of you may be familiar with um, with Dutch elm disease that wiped out huge blocks of, of like Chicago, taking out all the elm trees. So so there's a lot that goes into selecting street trees. And one of the things is we're running out, we're, we're narrowing down the amount of space available in front of houses. So our goal is Greenstone and certainly the city as well, plant as many trees as we can get in that makes sense. Uh, because if you look at the, the well-developed neighborhoods within Liberty Lake, they have great tree canopies. They're mature. And so that's the goal of, of those neighborhoods going forward is to get as many trees as we can. Um, so we're limited in those spaces because we have narrower lots, we have driveways, uh, we have streetlights, we have fire hydrants, we have other utilities. And so the um, the one line item, the five foot minimum from underground utilities, ducts and non-irrigation pipes, we've been, there is a separation between sewer lines and water lines of ten feet. And so that's ten feet to the center line to center line. And so that's one of, between those is one of those spots that we can plant a tree. And so we wanna have that communication. It's like, can we consistently get a tree in there? Because tree planting is not an exact science. It's not like putting a sign in between hitting that exactly, you know, ten feet offset. So we're requesting that that be eliminated. Um, that that offset from what we suggested and had the conversation with, with the city previously. So that's a tree placement clarification. So next slide, and this'll illustrate a little bit as to why. So the twos are the water line, are the new glasses, but I can't see as well. The twos are the sewer lines, the threes are the water lines. And so in between the threes is the property line. So a lot of things we don't do is we don't plant trees directly on the property line. We did that twenty years ago. And why did we stop doing that? Because who owns that tree? So, so as we go through, we identify, okay, what's the challenge here? So we plant a tree uh directly between the sewer and the water line, um, which is five feet on each side, but are they exactly, you know, we're hoping because the guys planting the trees, they may not know exactly where it is, but they, they try the best they can to get it in. And bearing in mind that there's a, there's a driveway and other stuff going on in the street as well. So again, it's a communication thing. How do we communicate what we wanna do? Get a, get a tree on a particular lot and also, you know, meet all the other requirements. Next slide. So a lot of things to keep in mind that ninety percent of the tree roots, and this is, and it's spreading out. And so we're planting trees in a six-foot strip that's not necessarily their natural habitat. And so that's why we're putting in, in root barriers. But we feel, and I, in the city through its comp plan and regulations, feel that the investment in the trees in the community offsets the challenges that we have sometimes with, with, with roots. And it's important, there's a lot of great things that come with having a, a great urban forest within the city of Liberty Lake and other cities. And the, the roots grow generally within the top three feet of soil. And the reason for that is that's where the water is and that's where the oxygen. So that's the most successful place for the tree roots to be. And certainly where you have grass, that's exactly where the water is. And so sometimes with some trees, the roots are a little bit more on the surface. You'll see that in some older neighborhoods as well. So, so next slide. So as far as utilities goes, keeping in mind that ninety percent of the roots are in the top three feet, almost the utilities for, for sewer and water are below four feet. So the, the risk, again, there's risk with everything that we do, especially with a natural material like a tree, um, is that, that maybe we'll have some conflict way in the future with a tree, but we're going to get benefits of those trees over time. And we also have to avoid fire hydrants. We have an offset for fire hydrants. We have an offset for streetlights. We have an offset for for driveways as well. That's noted in the, in the changes in the code as well. So next slide. So I wanna just reiterate that trees have value. And trees have a lot of value. Um, there's been a number of studies, including by the U S Forest Service, that, that a tree adds per house about seventy one hundred and thirty dollars per of value to that house. There are other um, studies that, that showed increases that much more. Um, trees reduce urban heat level, make your neighborhoods cooler, more walkable community, safety, protection of pedestrians from vehicles, and improve wellness of body, mind and spirit. So investment in urban forestry and getting trees in as much as we can possibly do and communicate between the designers, the developers and the staff and the community is really important. So we would like to remove that five foot offset, knowing that realistically, within this space, a tree and a utility, it's another four feet down, it's not really, it's really the uh, the risk is not that great. So anyway, we hope you consider that change as you deliberate, uh, the other changes. We hope you move forward with approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, real quick before you sit down, we have any questions for my Councilmember Dunn?
I'm very grateful for the insight, Mike. Uh, are there any specific hardships or encumbrances if this was remanded to the Planning Commission for additional consideration?
It would just be a delay. Um, but, but I don't think it would be, we would have that conversation, we'd have the same conversation with Plant Commission, so I don't think it'd be it's not, not like we're not planting trees tomorrow or we need the answer right away. So yes, it'd be, uh, it'd be great to move forward, but it wouldn't be a great hardship. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, go ahead, Lisa.
I just wanted to um, share that if you decide to remand it to Planning Commission, we will take it to them in their, at their December meeting and we can actually have it on the council agenda for the nineteenth. If you'd like to just say.
Councilmember Cargill?
No, I make a motion to remand this to the Planning Commission.
Um, before we have a second to that, let me get some public comment. Um, so is there anybody in chambers or online who would like to make a public comment on this topic for the landscape tree changes? Not seeing any here. Do we have anybody online? Not hearing any. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Card.
Make a motion to remand this to Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second, second. And we have a second by Councilmember Dunn. Any further discussion, council, before we go to a vote? Doesn't look like it. All right, all those in favor of remanding this um item back to the Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero and this one's closed at six fifty one.
Thank you all. That's all we have for our hearings tonight, but I will uh say that I, we will be bringing this back on the nineteenth. So thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so um Verizon Time says it's uh six forty eight, so we'll take a break and reconvene at seven. Thanks. We can uh get our meeting going here in just a moment. Um, note that recording's already on. I'm just gonna give, I don't know if we're still had people out in the lobby looking for a seat or not. If so, we may have room for a couple more here. There's a seat up front. There's one up in the second row here, if you'd like to take that. Or make sure everybody's nice and comfortable. Okay, all right, we will go ahead and uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, welcome to tonight's uh Tuesday, December fifth, twenty twenty third, three, City Council Meeting. city council meeting. Um, we are both obviously in person and also broadcasting on Zoom with, um, with some people joining us that way. So, we will go ahead and, um, start with the invocation. Um, I'll go ahead and do that, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Um, so, please join me.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here together today, uh, in this holiday season. Be with those families who have lost loved ones during the year. Be with those who have welcomed new loved ones during the year. And just guide us all in the right direction. We are all here for the good of the community. Whether we agree or disagree on everything, that is never going to happen, but please allow us to have respectful decisions and respectful comments as we navigate our way through city business tonight. In a, in a.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And I will dive into roll call real quick. Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Foliar.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
And welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, not the first. So, welcome. All right, so we are going to go on to agenda approval. Um, Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, Mayor, excuse me, I have, uh, let me first ask, is there any other changes to the agenda from any other council members?
Councilmember Cargill?
Wanted to, uh, move that, uh, we move ordinance 15C to 15A, so we can move it up a little bit and folks aren't here till midnight.
Well, I would, while we've got a motion on for, but I will remind everybody that the, the capital facilities plan and the budget is time-sensitive. Um, so, any, so we've got a motion to move that. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
It was second by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Kennedy. Old habits. Um, so, did any discussion on that request to move 15C ahead of 15A and B? All right, not hearing any. All in favor of that amend, of amending the agenda to move 15C first, um, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So, we have one opposed?
Two.
Okay, so the motion passes five-two. All right, so we have moved that amendment. We have moved 15C in front of A and B.
Have one other change, uh, Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to move item, you're with me?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Item nineteen, executive session to, um, right after the completion of item eight, just ahead of workshops, item nine.
Perfect. Do we have a second? And that's actually an administrative request, so if we could get a second, that'd be great. Thanks. We have a second by Councilmember Spencer. Um, any questions, discussion, that is, uh, uh, the topic would be a potential litigation. And this is timely, timely to get that in the council's, um, hands before we move through the rest of the agenda. So, all in favor of moving the executive session to, after the completion of reports and inquiries, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
All right, Mayor, make a motion to approve the amended agenda as you discussed.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Cargill. Um, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. All right, we are on to citizen comments. So, we've got, we've obviously got quite a few. Um, we've tried to segregate them a little bit, um, into the different topics, um, based on how many we have. So, we're going to go ahead and start with, um, comments from the River District Zone Change, um, with Dennis Sheehan, excuse me. So, while you're getting to the podium, I'm just going to kind of go through some of the ground rules for our citizen comments. Just a reminder that, that you're limited to three minutes. I will stop you at three minutes. Um, this is a comment period only. There is to be no back and forth with the council. If there's something that needs to be answered, we will make sure that we have your contact information and the staff will follow up. Uh, we also ask, um, ask that your comments be respectful. Um, while we can't prohibit anything personal, we, we do ask that you have respect for everybody in the, in the room, both those attendees and on the council. So, with that being said, we'll go ahead and start your three minutes. Welcome.
Dennis Sheehan, 19977, excuse me, East Glenbrook Avenue here in Liberty Lake. And I live on the street where it's being affected by change in the ordinance that you folks are going to consider here. I'm absolutely against it, but of course, if it's going to come to pass, I believe you need to have some guardrails. Otherwise, this little farm stand is just going to blossom out and mess up the rest of the neighborhoods. I'm fervently against it. I respect my neighbors. I wish they were up here speaking first because I didn't come prepared that well and I put my last name in and this first one up.
Totally random, I promise.
I pay for it. But again, um, I think there has to be some guardrails, some restrictions, at least something considered because otherwise I feel it would get out of hand. You may not agree with it, but that's my point of view and I hope you respect it and think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, and I, I saw, I need to add that too. There's two things I missed. I apologize. One, if you're online and would like to make a comment, please, um, instead of raising your hand on Zoom, please send a message in the chat feature to our meeting host who will keep track of who wants to make a, a comment. And also, we, we do ask, um, not to, to disrupt the meeting by clapping, cheering, booing, laughing. Um, we see this a bit. Um, but again, we want to try to keep everything moving. Um, so, with that being said, we will move on to Renee DeFranzo. I know I.
Something that I'm going to refer to as the Verdant Hair puts down roots. And it's, uh, it's, uh, based on the Spokane Journal of Business dated in July 2023.
So, um, I'd like to start off with, to this, my glass of my telephone. To this date, there's no detailed site plan, detailed project narrative or documentation that is substantive that is in the record. What is the jurisdiction for the rezone? Refer to the Spokane Journal of Business dated July 2023 called Verdant Hair. And that will explain some things that, why things are different. For example, hoop houses, which is a picture of a hoop house on the front of that. Greenhouses, market stands and storage buildings go up and all they have to do is meet the bare minimum requirement of setbacks, height and coverage. The developer is currently doing what he wants in the development of the agricultural, commercial, industrial and business, not zoned. For the neighbors in the Glen, Glenbrook area, we have to had, to endure the impacts of noise, visual and smell from the waste generated. The developer has been less than forthright with the farm. He did not communicate, communicate with anyone or try to get any collaboration from the neighborhood prior to starting the farm. It appears there are two separate hoop loop hoop houses behind my fence backyard and will be erected in the spring, approximately nine feet high, 50 feet long and 40 feet wide. Look what a beautiful thing to have, to look at outside my 12-foot sliding glass door. Of course, it was there for the past three years, however. It was under the Avista's high voltage lines. Now, the plan is cutting it in half and placing them double wide behind my house. And if different, please let me know, Mr. Frank. A little communication or on would be worth a lot.
This is why it's. Sorry. Democracy is supposed to be about an informed populace, making decisions together based on logic. Our forefathers laid out this idea of an informed citizenry, spoke about in the Federalist Papers by Alexander Hamilton, Thomas Jefferson and John Adams. Jefferson himself said that an informed citizenry is a pillar of our democracy. Informed citizenry relies on the access of knowledge. Not all knowledge everyone will agree with. That's okay. That's what democracy is about. But to restrict that access, to pass an ordinance, to pass the power into the political hands to make decisions outside of the professionals of what would be right for this community is an atrocity. Mr. Kennedy, I look to you. In this time, I understand that you are the deciding vote. I hope you lead with a conscience of what is American in our roots of democracy and whatnot has been the pathway that this country has been going on. That changing times come and go with the wind, but our roots should stay strong and the access to free knowledge for all Americans. And it doesn't matter what the book is or what's in it. Banning one book leads us on a path to ban more. And that is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next up, Shawna Dean.
Um, so people keep bringing up book bans. And everybody has said, this is not about banning books, it's about oversight. Um, but at the last city council meeting, Jed said the quiet part out loud. He said, um, how does a book like this get into the library in the first place? They don't want to ban books. They want to keep them from getting in the library in the first place. That's what oversight, it's all about the collection development policy. Jed made it clear. This isn't purely about the collection development policy and keeping books that they don't want in the library from getting into the library in the first place. There's been comments made that he wasn't sure where the library board got their advice. It was the city attorney um, on as to why the library board could just change a policy without the city council's approval. Wendy keeps bringing up that, well, the city council's always done it this way. You haven't. I've repeatedly said you have not. In 2019, when the last ordinances were changed, it did not come to a vote. You guys didn't see anything about the library or, or policy changes. It has not happened like this. I don't know where you're getting your information. I will say, I have, I have talked to law firms. They're very, very happy to take on a case against the city if it truly is your intent to change policies to keep books like that out of the library. And your comments will be used in that lawsuit as intent. The city will have to reimburse the funds under section 1988 when you lose that lawsuit. So, you will have to pay your own fund for your own attorneys and the funds for the other side's attorneys. When you're discussing budget, I hope you take that into consideration. Annie will be proposing some changes to the ordinance that I doubt you guys will consider because you haven't considered anything that anybody in this audience has said. I suggest you consider it because you're leading yourselves down to a lawsuit because I do truly believe that it's your intention to change the collection development policy to keep books like that out of the library. So, if, if that is your intent, the city will be sued and you will have to pay for both sides of that lawsuit.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Paige Van Buren.
Good evening. Um, my name is Paige Van Buren. I stand in front of you today as a Ridgeline High School senior and a new Liberty Lake voter. I also represent 130 other Ridgeline students who signed my online petition at change.org in opposition of the ordinance regarding the library board that the council is considering this evening. In my civics class, we just wrapped up a unit covering the balance of power in our government. I am grateful for the foresight of our nation's leaders in constructing this system and I beg you not to disrupt it today. Taking advantage of a one-month window to enact controversial policy against community wishes and community votes is acting in bad faith. I was grateful when the initial policy, initial library proposal was vetoed by Mayor Kaminsky. When I read in the newspaper that the library board's independence was again under fire, I decided it was time to find out how my fellow students felt about the issue. In less than five school days, with minimal campaigning outside of social media and one lunch period, we collected signatures from close to a tenth of the student body. The fact that 130 students, actually, the last time I checked, it was 160, rallied against this proposal demonstrates the passion we have for preserving the essence of our library as a space for learning, growth and intellectual exploration. The question that we want to have the answer to is, will Liberty Lake become a book banning city? The reason why we students are raising our voices is to say, no, it shouldn't ever. Please listen to your constituent constituents who you swore to represent. Value the voices of our students who inherit the consequences of your decisions. Please make the right decision today and preserve the library board's independence. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kim Schmidt is up next.
Also bring in my own Glock. Hi, I'm Kim Schmidt. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. Um, so last week I submitted a public records request, um, asking for any and all, um, records associated with public comments for, um, ordinance 119C or 119D. Uh, yesterday I did receive a little download, uh, related to 119D. They were all, uh, comments submitted before the last council meeting two weeks ago of, because, you know, in the spirit of transparency and there's been much debate about, have the comments been coming from city residents? Are they non-residents? There's all these people coming from outside the city? Well, I'm here to tell you, the records, uh, requests that I received yesterday, uh, those in support of this ordinance, 59% were residents and those opposed, 63% were residents. And as you notice, because you're all very observant people, the people who keep showing up to these meetings time after time. Uh, last meeting, it was 20 opposed to the ordinance, one for the ordinance. So, um, it just kind of, I, I wanted some visuals and some data to put behind the feelings that we're having. And as of right now with what I've received, and I'll keep you updated in the future. And I also have a Google link. If anybody wants to see, I'm ready, available, I'll send it to you right away. Um, if you'd like to see those quotes also. Um, I did notice some weird little patterns, um, one of which is noted in six of those, uh, let's see, I got 17 emails that were in support. Six of those mentioned something about either banning books or restricting access. So, I'm going to read a couple of those quotes. Um, quote, please keep, please keep porn out of the local city of LL Library, end quote. New quote, I feel our city library should not allow minors to access pornography. Minors should not in any way be allowed to check out or view pornographic material, end quote. New quote, please keep porn out of our library and specifically out of our children's section, end quote. New quote, policy decisions regarding the broad access of controversial material should not be made in the dark outside of the public eye, especially with regards to what could easily be interpreted as sexual material made easily accessible to minors, end quote. New quote. Most taxpayers do not want their tax money going towards, uh, library literature that is indecent and overtly sexual in nature. There's another really long one there, but it also relates to restricting books. Um, bear in mind, the book that two of you voted to ban has been held in the adult section of the library. Okay, nobody's pushing their view of pornographic material on minors. It is being housed in the adult section of the library. So, um, yeah, with the 10 seconds I have left, I do live on Glenbrook and I am opposed to the rezoning. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, Judy Silverstein.
I'm Judy Silverstein. I'm not a resident of City Lake, but I live in the county. And I have written, um, emails before last spring that are much more eloquent. So, I wanted to talk about a topic um, that I didn't mention before, and that was, uh, about Christianity because I thought that, um, Liberty Lake is a Christian place and a lot of the Christians are, uh, maybe against this book banning. So, I guess what I don't understand is your problem with inclusion as, uh, because your book banning will, uh, exclude others. And, uh, I don't understand this because Jesus tells us to love our neighbors and even love our enemies. And again, I thought Liberty Lake was, um, a, a very Christian community, even though the First Amendment does prohibit government from establishing a religion. As you probably know, Matthew 6.5 says, don't be like the hypocrites who pray publicly on street corners. When you pray, go into your room and shut the door and pray for your fathers, uh, end quote. So, a religion that must force people to. So a religion that must force people to read limited choices is, I'm sorry to say, a dead religion, one we shouldn't want to be a part of if we view the Bible as a living Bible, which is what I do. And scripture also says that faith without works is dead. So how does this library ordinance feed the hungry or clothe the naked or heal the sick? It doesn't. And Paul in Romans 13 says, love is the fulfilling of the law. So a lot of the commandments to not murder, steal, or covet, or commit adultery, for example, all boil down to loving thy neighbor as thyself. And our neighbors do include people who are different from us. Some like chocolate better than vanilla, or vice versa. Some like country music, some like classical, some read fiction, some read nonfiction. So does your ordinance truly love, truly include your different neighbors? So in a multiracial, multi-ethnic, multi-religious, multi-gender democracy is the closest thing we have to Jesus's version of the Kingdom of Heaven, not a monoculture of one belief and one experience. And teaching religion, of course, is the parent's role, not a city government's role. So I'd hate for you to have to change your name by leaving out the word liberty if you remove intellectual liberty from your town. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Maria Garcia Buckman.
I have a timer also, I just started it. I want to thank those of you who sang, even though it was silly and seemed unnecessary. And obviously there were, as a person who didn't think it was necessary to cover the word nigger, nigger, nigger over and over, he just sat there. I'm going to read from a book that will likely be banned if the new Liberty Lake library becomes what we expect. It is institutions that help us to preserve decency. They need our help as well. Do not speak of our institutions unless you make them yours by acting on their behalf. Institutions do not protect themselves. They fall one after the other unless each is defended from the beginning. So choose an institution you care about. A court, a newspaper, a law, a labor union, a library, and take its side. We tend to assume that institutions will automatically maintain themselves against even the most direct attacks. This was the very mistake that some German Jews made about Hitler and the Nazis after they'd formed a government. February 2nd, 1933, for example, a leading newspaper for German Jews published an editorial expressing this mislaid trust. We do not subscribe to the view that Mr. Hitler and his friends, now finally in possession of the power they have so long desired, will implement the proposals circulating in Nazi newspapers. They will not suddenly deprive German Jews of their constitutional rights, nor enclose them in ghettos, nor subject them to the jealous and murderous impulses of the mob. They cannot do this because a number of crucial factors hold powers in check. And they clearly do not want to go down that road. When one acts as a European power, the whole atmosphere tends toward ethical reflection upons one better self, one's better self, and away from revisiting one's earlier oppositional posture. Such was the view of many reasonable people in 1933, just as it is the view of many reasonable people now. The mistake is to assume that rulers who came to power through institutions cannot change or destroy those very institutions, even when that is exactly what they have announced they will do. It took less than a year for the new Nazi order to consolidate. By the end of 1933, Germany had become a one-party state in which all major institutions had been humbled. That November, German authorities held parliamentary elections without opposition and a referendum on an issue where the correct answer was known to confirm the new order. Some German Jews voted as the Nazi leaders wanted them to in the hope that this gesture of loyalty would bind the new system to them. That vein was in hope. I will defend our institutions.
Thank you. All right, and I think last up is DG Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and honorable members of the city of Liberty Lake. I'm DG. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. This is about a legacy of good and a legacy of power. In 2015, when I drove to Liberty Lake on a vacation, I ended up staying because it was, at that moment, everything I had wanted. I gave my business up and I retired from state service doing good things. In 2016, or around about 2016, 2017, we had the first incident of a racial unrest at the athletic club. And the community stood forward and said, not in our town. That felt good. Fast forward, we had George Floyd. And all across the United States, things were burning and coming apart. And our chief of police at the time, Chief Astmas, said, not in my city. And he brought people together. He brought ideas together. He brought us together. And we continue that legacy today. Now let's look at what's happening now. Is this a legacy for good or a legacy for power and greed? When I sat on the city council honorably, I made a decision on the city council to do what was right when they were deciding how far we should have transportation away from the least among us who had the least. And two of the planning commissioners just didn't like that I said, that's not going to work. And it was red alert all over Facebook. What a mess. One city council member who sits here today was in such protest that he almost lost his mind. And now we sit here today with that same greed and power and might and determination to get my way. Let's not look at our past as an indication on what we want for our future. Let's look at the greed of people who really don't want to be here in Liberty Lake. They don't want to be here at all. They would rather be on the highest mountain with the biggest megaphone spewing all that is negative. Unless they get their way. I'm sorry that that's happened to our great city. We've elected people who've come back who may have the same intention. I hope not. And we have in our midst a member of our council who's got good intentions, but he's running towards the dark side because it's the last thing he can do. He's building his legacy on the power and greed of having the opportunity to do the last thing he can do. What do we want? Do you want yesterday?
I'll need to stop you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't know, Kelsey, do you have any further? Because I know, do you know we had someone who was trying to comment online legitimately? Who is on the phone? Is there any, Sean, is there any problem with somebody holding the phone up to the mic so that a citizen can make the comment?
As everyone can hear.
Yep. Okay, so we, and that person's name is? Oh, Cynthia from our, apart from community engagement. Okay, we'll go ahead and recognize her. And I believe Mr. Salberg has her on the phone. Okay, just a minute, Mr. West will come back.
Everybody can hear me okay?
Hold it up closer to the mic. Cynthia, if you could, please introduce yourself and note if you're Liberty Lake resident or not. I know the answer, but we'll need it on the record.
Okay, my name is Cynthia Godinez. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. I live in the River District.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, ladies and gentlemen, residents of Liberty Lake and city council members. Neighbors, thank you for sharing your concerns and shedding light on many critical aspects of this proposed zoning change. You have spent a lot of your time researching this issue. It is disheartening to hear that the motivations behind this proposal might not align with the noble goal of preserving our land, but rather with the expansion of a for-profit business under the guise of a community farm. If the intention were indeed to protect the land, as stated by Mr. Frank at the hearing examiners meeting, we would expect a comprehensive approach that includes all green spaces, not just a selective zoning change. The question arises, why is this proposal targeting certain areas such as the park directly north of the farm? And not embracing a holistic approach to safeguard all green spaces such as the green space in Tretina? The example of the walkway intended to be an open space for the community, now transformed into a section swallowed up by a growing business is concerning. Many of my neighbors choose not to completely, choose to completely avoid that area now. The sentiment shared by residents is that the space no longer serves its intended purpose. This speaks volumes about the impact of unchecked expansion of this farm in our neighborhood. The apprehension of further expansion raises valid questions about the future of our community. Is the charm of Liberty Lake's River District susceptible to diminishment from the literal encroachment of this farm's business interests? Are we setting a precedent that any big business, regardless of its fit within our community, can push through its agenda at the expense of the residents? It is crucial for us to reflect on the message we are sending to the people of Liberty Lake. If we allow this zoning change, are we signaling that the interests of large businesses take precedence over the concerns and wishes of the very community they are meant to serve? Should other big businesses owners expect similar treatment? A launch to alter zoning regulations to suit their expansion plans? In conclusion, let us consider the implications of this zoning change beyond its immediate impact. We must ask ourselves if we want to endorse a model where the desires of large businesses supersede the well-being and desires of the people who call Liberty Lake home. It is our duty to protect the integrity of our community, ensuring that any changes made reflect the collective will of its residents. Thank you.
Right at three minutes. Thank you very much. Kelsey, you have information?
I have written comments.
Okay, well, and then I think, I think we have somebody else. If you can give your sheet to Kelsey, please, for me, and then we'll have Mr. West give his comment, and then we'll have Kelsey acknowledge any written comments that we have.
Good evening. I wasn't going to say anything this evening, but in light of where we're at with this, I don't know that this is going to make a difference or not, but it's time to shed a little light and all the darkness. What I have that I'm holding here is a special meeting that was called from the Ponderosa Republican Women Emergency Board Meeting on June the 10th, 2023, that Mr. Cargill was involved with. That, and I'm going to read this, I'm not going to go ahead and announce people from the leadership of that organization. Chris Cargill was invited to attend the meeting to share his concerns regarding Chris Kaminsky, mayor of Liberty Lake. Cargill believes the mayor is acting against the Republican Party and platform and recommended that we consider excluding her from the candidate meeting on June the 13th. For one, she has tripled the city budget since she took office two and a half years ago, and this is not true. Secondly, has not been supportive of the city council's ordinance to have oversight over the library board, which are unelected and receive 23.8% of property taxes paid by Liberty Lake residents. Finally, and most glaringly, Chris Kaminsky attended a fundraising event for Travis Scott, a far-left Democrat, which is again a falsehood, who is running for Liberty Lake City Council against conservative Jed Spencer. Travis Scott has made inappropriate comments on Facebook about Chris Cargill. There's some other things that was discussed here as well. My point is tonight, Mr. Cargill, you should recuse yourself for bias. And if you continue and do not recuse yourself, it is my opinion and the opinion of several legal people that I have contacted that you are placing the city of Liberty Lake in jeopardy. And if the city attorney is aware of any other complaints that any of those statements that I read are true, then that needs to be ruled on before this vote can be taken this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, Kelsey, you're up. I know we've received a lot of written comments that have been distributed to the council.
We received written public comments on the topic of the library ordinance from Gail Tenbrink, excuse me, Tenbrink, Elizabeth Big Horse, Melissa Pitt, Jack Barata, Colleen Robich, Nellie Spencer, Justin Folkins, Jim Bumker, and then we received written public comments on the topic of the proposed River District Zone Ordinance, excuse me, zone change from Richard Albertson, Betty Zerba, and Bonnie Burns.
Thank you very much. All right. So I think we're done with citizen comments. Give them one last chance if anybody's changed their mind. Going once, going twice. All right. We will move on now. We don't have any announcements, proclamations, or special presentations, so we'll move right into reports and inquiries. First up is city council. Is there anybody on city council who would like to make any reports or have any inquiries into anything since the last meeting? Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last city council meeting, I asked for engagement from the majority to complete the work that the mayor had suggested in a veto to work together to find the middle regarding ordinance 119C at the time and D now. The middle was initially suggested by councilmember Cargill and pursued multiple times by Mayor Protem over the last 12 months. Unfortunately, the last meeting, that offer to form an official committee and send this to committee was rejected by the council. But it should come as no surprise to anyone that I would follow through with what I said I would do at the last meeting, to come to the table and engage with the Board of Trustees. I believe in community engagement. I I couldn't count how many times I've said I believe in community engagement over the last three years. My words match my actions. It's what I do every single day. I own it, on and off the dais. I invited a member of the Board of Trustees to meet with me after our last meeting to see if there was any language that would be a good faith effort to get to the middle. Work that the mayor Protem tried a few different times over the past year to do also on his own. The individual board member and I collaborated and identified two solutions, and I sent those ideas to our city attorney to review on November 26th and November 29th. I was invited to attend a Board of Trustees meeting scheduled for 12/1, which was publicly noticed in order for the board to discuss 119D. The result of that meeting was a five to zero vote to support language that I will propose in an amendment to 119D when we get to that part of the agenda tonight. In good faith and transparency, this language was provided to the council yesterday after our city attorney's review and in advance of tonight's meeting for the council's review and consideration. The work I did again was a good faith effort to get to the middle that councilmember Cargill said existed. And in an attempt to complete the work, the mayor asked for an veto and to complete the work that the mayor Protem had been doing on his own with the board for several months this year. So in that process, there were some outstanding questions that existed for me. One of the things that I try to live my life by is to be humble because you could be wrong. So over the past 12 months, multiple council members have stated that the basis for taking control of the library policies through this ordinance is to have oversight, like we do with every other department. I took the time to ask our city administrator to concretely identify which departmental policies and procedures are currently controlled by the city council. I was a little surprised by what I found, but I do have a slide deck that I hope can be put out for everybody.
Do we not have it?
We have it. We need to get it up on the screen.
Thank you, everybody, for being patient. Sorry about that technology as well.
Yeah, not having Zoom has hampered our ability to do some of this.
All right. Okay, all right.
Go ahead.
So like I said, um, I checked in with our city administrator to ask the question, um, what city of the city departments where the council currently defines or controls policy? Um, so hang on a second, I'm not quite, hold on just a second. Um, so he gave me um a grid that's in here that you guys will see, um, but if there are any interpretations of that that are off, um, that is me and not our city administrator. Next slide, please. So one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we are correcting tonight is some misinformation. In the past, the majority of the council has justified the necessity for 119D based on misinformation. Um, it is a fact that the council has statutory, statutory authority to exercise administrative or procedural oversight or city departmental policies and procedures through the RCW that's outlined there. What we have are justifications and misinformation. The council currently has control over or defines all other departmental policies, and this ordinance change is just to ensure oversight of the library is consistent with all of the departments. So that's the misinformation that I would like to correct tonight. Next slide, please. So the question that I asked um of our city administrator, um, after all this time, the mayor has said on the record several times, we do not have control over all the policies. She said it on the record. She has said that, and yet no one believes her, it seems like. Next slide, please. So for the most part, we do not control most of the policies and procedures of the life of the departments that are up there. On the left, you have all the departments of the city. The first column, the council, the council has the statute, statutory authority to define the policies and procedures. Yes, in all the columns. We can do that. Uh, the last column, the council currently defines policies and procedures by ordinance and resolution. And in that column, it is all no's. We do not do that. We do not currently exercise our authority over any other department. We have partial over finance, but it would be an exception. We don't have, uh, this is the answer to that question. We do not have, um, we have not exercised that authority. Next slide, please. So inconsistency. The majority of the council has said that this ordinance change is just about having consistent oversight. However, based on the graph and math, this body has not formally exercised complete oversight over the policies of 86% of city departments. The only exception is the financial, finance, which we've only exercised partial oversight over. Next slide, please. The interest in the library policy stands out to me because, here are a couple of facts. It would be exceptionally inconsistent, based on the math previously shown, for this council to take control or define the policies of the library. We do not do that for any other department for the city of Liberty Lake. This is the only department we would be exercising this level of operational control over through ordinance. It is factually inaccurate to say that this change is consistent with how the council interacts with other departments in the city. Next slide, please. So what I continue to be concerned about um, about whether we should or shouldn't go through with the policy change, the ordinance change, is the misinformation and the misinformed support. I believe there is misinformed support for 119D. Many citizens who support this ordinance believe that the city already has this oversight over all of the policies except the library. Like, it's a totally reasonable request. Why wouldn't we just do this? That's the main reason why some support the ordinance change. This is a quote from a comment we received today. As a department of the city, the library should have the same oversight that all of the departments have. Totally reasonable, except that we don't. The majority of the council has not tried to correct this misinformation. I'm not even sure that the question was asked over the last year. Next slide, please. So my point with sharing this is information is an inquiry that I made. And in my opinion, as a legislative body, we owe our citizens decisions and ordinances that are based on facts, not assumptions, not misinformation. It's irresponsible to continue to allow the misinformation to persist in the community without correction, which is why I'm doing this here publicly in front of you tonight. Further, it's irresponsible to vote based on misinformation once we're aware of it. I don't know if the council knew that we do not have, we have not exercised, used our power over all of the departments of the library. But if they don't, they do now, and I expect that to be considered tonight later when we're voting on 119D. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to, uh, I guess my report. I'll make it short, given that we've got still a lot on the agenda. Um, briefly in it since the last meeting, we've had a GS, Greater Spokane Incorporated Board Meeting and also their Public Policy Meeting, Valley Chamber Board Meeting. Um, most importantly, over the last couple of weeks, I had a updated conversation with Senator Patton about the potential of the uh Army National Guard Facility. The appraisals have been done on the two parcels, one about 20 acres um, at the airport and the one here in Liberty Lake, which is about 30, 34. Um, he and I were both very shocked at the numbers. They um came in pretty much opposite what he and I both thought and probably what you guys will think too. So the appraisal at the airport minus demolition, estimated demolition costs, it's about 20 acres, came in at 1.25 million. With everything going on at the airport, this really shocked me. Um, the parcel here in Liberty Lake um came in at 7 million for the, for the, for the 30, 34 acres. So there's still some more work to do. Um, he's, he is, um, was interesting, it was, it was uh um, kind of an internal um appraiser um from from DNR. I had to get on that. So it was their own appraiser who, who went through that. So there's still some more work to do. The hope was that the parcel at the airport would generate enough um, a, a high enough appraisal so that that would pay for the purchase of the land here in Liberty Lake and pay for most of the, of the facility that they're wanting to put in. So more work to go. Um, I um gonna, I haven't even had a chance to get with Mark on this, but um, I think there's a couple of um thoroughly active commercial um real estate agents here in Liberty Lake who um can give us some impartial opinion on the Liberty Lake parcel here. Um, you know, heck, we've got the comparable just down off of Apple Way where Marine B is going in um with that huge, again, um interstate front property. So we've got some other comparables. This, it's not over. We're still fighting for this, but I did want to give everybody an update as to where we were on that project. Um, coming up, um, we've got the elected, newly elected officials training that's coming up this Saturday. I think the majority of us here are going. Um, it always is good to have a refresher. Um, we've got the Government Action Committee for the Chamber coming up. GSI Legislative Forum is on the 13th. If you're not already signed up for that, I think there's still time if you're interested. Uh, we, I've got the SRTC Board Meeting and Administrative Committee Meeting coming up as well. Um, it's funny thing, I uh, I applied to be on a couple of the committees with National League of Cities. Um, the WIMMage, which is the Women in Municipal Government, and also First Tier Suburbs, which is kind of like us as, as we compare ourselves to a city of Spokane. Imagine my surprise when I got an email today saying I was, I was appointed to the Indigenous Peoples Committee. Um, you know, and I thought, well, you know, maybe there's some, you know, I'm happy to, to help promote the, the diversity in, in government, which is really what their charter is. But then shortly after that, I got the, got the, oh, whoops, um, we didn't mean to include you on that list. But I told them I'd be happy to serve if they'd like me to. Um, so uh, really, really uh happy to have the, have the opportunities to get a little bit more involved with National League of Cities. So that's all I have of my report, and we'll hand it over to Mark, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of the council, members of the audience, a few quick event uh reminders. City Academy is ongoing. The uh Fall 2023 class is quickly uh coming to its end. We've got two more sessions, one on December the 7th, the day after tomorrow, a one, uh, the final one, a week from that date. And we've got two uh popular topics coming up. One is law enforcement, which is by far the most popular. And so if you're interested in hearing more about what our law enforcement, particularly our police department does, come out and join us on the 7th at Trailhead. Uh, it's a great opportunity to meet Chief Simmons and Deputy Chief Morgan and get some more information about the PD. And then the following week, we're going to have a joint presentation um in session by our partners at Avista and the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. So you're welcome to join us on both of those. They start at 6:00 PM at Trailhead um in the Rotary Room there. Uh, after that, we've got the uh Library Christmas Party, which is scheduled for December the 21st at the library, and I believe that starts at 6:00 PM. Jan Di, give me a big thumbs up. All right, 6:00 PM at the library. And then a, a reminder, we're still a few weeks out from this, but the Christmas holiday is coming up. And so on Monday, December 25th, uh, both the City Hall and the library will be closed in observance of Christmas holiday. And then another reminder that Winter Glow Spectacular is happening at Orchard Park through January 1st. And if you want to know more about that, not only as an event, but the history of it, we have a podcast that is available. If you go visit our Facebook page, you can find a link to that. And so before I move on, I'll ask if there are any questions about any of these reminders. Seeing none?
Any other, other events that we may be missing? Okay. Let's mark.
All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on and ask Lisa to come up and give the council an update on the Transportation Improvement Board's um evaluation of our submittal of the Sprague Avenue Phase 1 project. Lisa? So I'll move on and we'll circle back. Um, for reasons that should be obvious to everyone, I'm going to skip item two, and we'll come back to that another time. Regional, uh, Regional Collaborative on Homelessness. We've talked quite a bit about this, but not recently. And so um, if you'll recall, we had a representative from that uh organization come and present some information, and based on that presentation, uh, the, the council uh voted to kind of continue on partnering with the collaborative. And so what's been happening since that occurred is we've been meeting and, and multiple municipalities and agencies have been meeting to do different things. And as a result of that um collection of meetings, what has happened is that the group has made some decisions with respect to the governing board and structure um and made some decisions on how the organization, which ultimately is going to be a public development authority, is going to uh align and kind of leverage um the Regional Continuum of Care Board. And don't worry about all of these names. These are, these are things that are related to funding streams and how organizations make decisions on what funding goes where. And so the, the, there's been a lot of attention paid to how this PDA is going to align with the Continuum of Care so that it can be most effective um and not working at cross purposes. And so the good news is, on the governing structure, um, they've made a decision to create a 14-person board, executive board. And I, I think of that, the best news is that we were successfully able to get them to add two seats for small cities. Now, we're going to have to uh be part of those two, right? It's not Liberty Lake and someone else. It's small cities together, but two representatives. Um, and so what the concern one is, was is as, as the board was expanding, we did not want to dilute our voice. Um, and so we lobbied very hard and successfully so to add a second seat for the small cities. So that's good news. Timeline. Um, we've stopped the weekly meetings, but we are going to have ad hoc meetings with the goal of bringing this authority back for a formal uh vote for creation in the first quarter of 2024. And so between now and then, you'll hear more about this, and I'll send you each some uh specific information. But if you want to learn more about it, and this includes anybody, um, go to uh Spokane, hold on, Spokaneunite.org, and it's got all of the documents. It's got links to all of the, the meetings. They're recorded. They're there for you to see if you're interested in finding out more about the Collaborative on Homelessness and its next steps. Any questions about that? That's a lot of information, but any questions about that? All right, um, is Lisa back?
Yes.
There she is. Okay, I'm going to invite Lisa back up to talk about the Transportation Improvement Board's recommendation.
Yes, um, so as you will recall, um, we did apply for a TIV grant for the uh Sprague Avenue overlay, basically from uh Gage Road to uh Multer, uh, which is the worst section of the roadway. Unfortunately, there were um quite a number of applications this year that did not get funded, and we were one of them. So um, that is, uh, we're disappointed. Um, uh, we are reaching out to our TIV representative to do a debrief so that we can hopefully learn from it, but it sounds like for the most part, this was just a matter of a lot more demand than there was funding. And so um unfortunately, uh, we did not get it. Uh, we are in the design right now, and, and again, um, well, uh, we were not expecting to be constructing until um, until 2025 anyhow. So if you look at our CIP, the, the dollars, the dollars in for now are for, for the design and, and bidding process. So um, it won't affect this year's budget, but I did want to make you all aware that uh we were unsuccessful.
Thank you. Questions?
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Um, we have Kyle with a man, meeting management update.
We're going to skip that. Yeah, we, we, we don't want to go into a Monty Python routine, considering what's happened.
Gotcha. Okay, well, and, and I did just to get a, get a communication from the GM uh with Executive Tech, and he's already scheduling a meeting to go over what's, what, what happened and how to prevent it. So. Okay, um, so next up, um, we have Spokane Valley Fire Department. Thank you for your patience, and we look forward to your report. You, you gave the chief the night off?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, even the chief takes a vacation every once in a while. Um, Madam Mayor, council members, city officials, thanks for having me. My name is Zach Bond. I'm the Operations Deputy Chief for the Spokane Valley Fire Department, and we proudly serve Liberty Lake. I'm going to echo the, the mayor's sentiments. I'm going to keep this quick. I know you've got a busy night. So uh, the Commissioner's Report that you're seeing is a, a report I present every month to our Board of Commissioners that we've recently adapted. So in the vein of keeping it simpler, this may be the first time you guys have seen this format. Chief Soto may have presented it last month, but I bring that up only because we want it to be something that's useful for you. So if there's something that you see or don't see here, please let me know, and I, we can adapt the report to, to reflect Liberty Lake. And I'm going to highlight some of the things that, that are specific to your city. So Spokane Valley Fire Department is in unprecedented times with our call volume. Uh, last year represented the busiest year of calls for service in our history. And as you're looking at this slide, so far this year, we've responded to over twenty-one thousand calls for service with nineteen hundred and nine of those calls being in the month of November. So we're on pace to match or exceed our call volume for twenty twenty-three, so our call volume is only going up and up. Uh, down in the bottom there, you see the calls represented by call type. The blue is our our biggest portion, which is emergency medical services, which is just over eighty percent, followed by fire suppression, which encompasses all types of fire suppression from structures to debris to vehicles. And then technical rescue, which also is gonna include your motor vehicle accidents. Next slide, please. So these are our responses. Uh, this is my favorite slide because it illustrates just how busy our response companies are. You'll notice that on the right is our responses up to this year. And the reason that's a bigger number is because there are a number of call types that require more than one piece of equipment. So Spokane Valley Fire Department units have responded to over twenty-seven thousand calls for service. And I generally like to highlight our busiest three units, which are Valley Engine One, Seven, and Eight. Uh, Engine Eight's only been in service for part of the year, but all of those units run over three thousand calls a year, which is a benchmark for a very busy piece of equipment. Moving down about middle of the pack, you'll look notice Valley Engine Three, which is your Liberty Lake Fire Engine there on Country Vista, hovers right around hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy calls per month, and they're just over one thousand seven hundred calls for service for twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please. This one's a little hard to read, but about middle of the pack, you're gonna see Station Three, and this is our calls per response area. Station Three being Liberty Lake. And you can see there where it accounts for about eight percent of Spokane Valley Fire Department's overall call volume. Next slide, please. A little bit hard to see also, the the graphs on the top are your uh, year over year, month by month. And the what I want to point out, even though you probably can't see the numbers, is that the trend just is going up and up. And down on the bottom, you're gonna see our call volume overall. And the reason we have a a downtick there on the last one is that twenty twenty-three is not over yet. So after December, which is generally one of our busier months, we expect to see that surpassing our our busiest call volume year ever, which was just over twenty-three thousand last year. Uh, that's the end of my report. If you won't mind, I want to just point out a couple of different things for all of you. First off, we just changed our clocks and we remind everybody that we change our smoke detector batteries and our carbon monoxide batteries every time we do that twice a year. Uh, those are truly lifesavers and only if they work. And uh, if you need help with that, call your Spokane Valley Fire Department and we'll help you with that. Um, second, with the weather change, we see an uptick in vehicle accidents. We're just gonna remind you to slow down, take care of the slick roadways, give each other space. And lastly, and equally as important, is we see uh, increase in fires and namely, structure fires, because we're using more heat-producing appliances, candles and the like. So we remind you to be real responsible with those things. Never plug a heat-producing appliance into an extension cord. Use proper power strips with fuses and uh, keep candles uh, attended. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't know if everybody else saw the story today about the gentleman who was trying to heat his Tesla battery with a toaster.
Yeah, we see a a lot of interesting things in our job, so, yeah.
Destroyed the car.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Uh, alright, next up, we have Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'll be really quick. Uh, good news, we had a great year with uh, yard waste and leaf drop-off, best year ever. Bad news is, we don't have really good numbers, because, good news, everybody, thank you all, cut their bags open this year. And so it almost ninety percent of the people, we think, cut their bags open when they dropped them off. So thank you very much. That creates a lot less work and labor for others. But back to bad news, if you are incarcerated and we're looking forward to a day out with a sharp object to cut bags open out for us, you will not get that chance this year. Which, this is, that's how we get that done usually. Um, so, probably doesn't apply to anybody here. Uh, we are gonna have probably in late winter, an open house to celebrate the remodeling that's gone on at the district office, uh, which you might have noticed if you ever went by there, there's a side door we're using now. That's almost done and it's gonna be our fifty-year celebration as a Sewer and Waters District Two. So we're gonna do something, kind of a big open house for the whole community, uh, probably in late winter, February, March-ish. And then finally, I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, I know, I heard we had a big storm. I was gone that weekend, but I heard we had some snow. And I guess the plowing is all going well and we're coordinating with any kind of issues with uh, sewer lids and anything like that. So I think that's all going really well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have unless there's questions. No?
No, thanks for coming. Alright, we're in end of our reports and inquiries. Um, just what everybody wants, we are going to um, adjourn to executive session for about fifteen minutes, so everybody sit tight here. We'll try to do it faster. Um, but we're going to adjourn for Executive Claire. Okay, so, um, no, I don't think, I don't think, no, we're just recording for, yeah. So so just for uh, record-keeping, um, we uh, we came back into chambers at um, eight fifty-nine and four, what, forty? Eight forty-nine, sorry. Oh, yeah, it's not eight fifty-nine yet. So eight forty, eight forty-nine, and we are resuming the meeting here at eight fifty-two. No decisions were made, and so we are going to go ahead on, continue on with our workshop discussions. The first one is Lisa's turn, proposed River District Open Space Zone Change and Development of Development Code Amendment.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. First of all, I just want to say to our administrative staff, I am ecstatic to see my presentation. Next slide, please. So I just want to say that that this is, that this tonight is just a workshop. Um, the intent is to give you city council the background and the facts on the River District, uh, um, oh, open space zoning proposal. Um, the actual here, public hearing is scheduled for December nineteenth, and I want to make a point that that hearing will be held at six PM as we did this evening, because I think it's gonna be a long one. So what the proposal, this is a Greenstone-initiated proposal to change the zoning on several RDR and RDM zone properties that are owned by the um, River Crossing Owners Association. Um, in the RDR zone up there, you see Half Moon Park, that's parcel number one. Um, River Rock Parsh- Park is parcel number three. And two, A, B, and C are the Greenway Community Farm. Um, again, uh, uh, so uh, Half Moon Park is almost three acres, the Greenway Community Park is almost four acres, um, and River Rock Park is almost five acres. Next slide, please. There's also a parcel that you just approved, the plat for in River District Town Center First Edition that's intended to be a future Centennial Trailhead. Um, and this is uh, at the intersection of Wellington and Wildry in um, the Noel District. Um, and that's about ninety-six hundred square feet. Next slide, please. Again, um, we've been through this in the this morning's hearing numerous times, so I'm not gonna read the criteria again, but these are the criteria for approval for an amendment. And this is interesting because this one is a comprehensive plan amendment. The the specific area plan is um, i- is basically incorporated into the comprehensive plan by reference. So they're changing the the specific area plan and the land use map associated with that. And but they're also proposing um, zoning regulations for this newly created River District Open Space Zone. Um, and it is intended to sort of mirror the open space zone in in uh, the City Development Code. Next slide, please. Procedural summary, again, you've seen this so many times, I'm not gonna go over it. Um, the point is that we have covered, we've done everything we had to do. The one that's, the one thing that's different about the zone change is that we did, the zone change is a type-four project. So it requires both um, a hearing before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is dealing with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, so the land use map, and also the and the SAP, but also the development regulations. The Hearing Examiner really is only looking at the zone change. Um, and because that's a quasi-judicial matter, and that's why it goes to the Hearing Examiner. So we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission and we have a recommendation from the Hearing Examiner. Next slide, please. Um, actually, um, so we with the with the two other public comments that you received today, we're now up to forty public comments uh, that have been received today. And commonly cited concerns were as follows, noise and odor from the farm farm operation, unsightly views of storage containers from and farm equipment, lack of screening and buffering from adjacent residential uses, lack of engagement of neighboring properties and HOA members uh, uh, prior to the development of the farm on the HOA property. And then general incompatibility of an active commercial farm adjacent to residential property. So that's we've and and you've you've had the opportunity to hear some of those comments as well. Next slide, please. Um, uh, these are some of the relevant comp plan goals and policies. Next slide. Uh, there's a few, and it is in your packet. Um, I will talk about the ones that may be somewhat inconsistent. Next slide, please. And again, next slide, please. So staff analysis. So we, uh, first of all, looking at the proposed uses included in this new zoning category. Uh, are general, they're generally uses that are already allowed under existing zoning, including community events, seasonal and special events, mobile sales and concessions, food trucks, small-scale orchards, vineyards, and community gardens. The main differences in the uses allowed are that agricultural products slash craft sales stand like a farmer's market would be allowed on properties currently zoned RDR. Uh, the farmer's market is already allowed on RDM property, just not in RDR, uh, in the RDR zone. The community garden, the farm stands and market gardens would be outright allowed uses with proposed uh, definitions to be added to River District Development Code ten-one-C. Um, again, we've already determined that the small-scale farm is technically consistent with the RDR zoning. That's already an interpretation that has been made. RDR zoning does allow for active farms as a limited use. Um, now, new farms are not allowed. However, it also, as a sec- separate subcategory of uh, active farms, it does allow for community gardens and small-scale orchards, vineyards, and uh, et cetera. And again, using the Washington RCWs, they refer to small-scale farming as under ten acres. So we determined that what they were doing actually fit the definition of small-scale farming. Unfortunately, there's no such definitions in the River District. There's regulations without definitions, so we defer to the RCWs. Next slide, please. The differences in the proposed development code, um, uh, identifying primary use structures in the the zone would include picnic shelters, restrooms, playground equipment, water features, vegetable garden beds, farm stands, produce cleaning building and shipping containers are expressly identified as an acceptable primary structure. May I say again that all of these things, except for the shipping containers, are already allowed? Next slide, please. Um, there are some dis- differences in the proposed development code also, um, in- including increasing side yard setback from zero to ten feet and the rear yard setback from five to ten feet. Uh, changing maximum lot coverage from thirty percent to ten percent. Adding design standards that include buffering and screening requirements for metal shipping containers and residential uses specifically proposing that container shall not be closer than fifty feet from a public right-of-way with a side obscuring fence not less than six feet or an evergreen landscape buffer not less than six feet high. A permanent evergreen landscape buffer of not less than eight feet in height shall be required along the entire length of the building elevation facing the RDR zone and shall be located within ten feet of the building. And screening of the non-access entry side of the container may be required to meet this standard. So these are things that have been proposed to be added by Greenstone. Next slide, please. Um, there's a number of potential comp plan policies that are in conflict with the the amendment as it was proposed. Urban Design Goal Number One, maintain the urban village character and the scenic resources of the community. Housing Goal Number One, preserve the character of existing neighborhoods and support high-quality new development. Land Use Policy One, encouraging developers to work with neighborhoods to develop plans that address neighborhood concerns such as environmental protection, aesthetics, quality of life, property value, values, and preservation of open space. Land Use Policy Number Two, provide for compatible mix of housing and commercial uses in all commercial districts, neighborhood centers, community centers, and the Central Business District. And Erman Design Policy Number One, maintaining design standards and a design review process to ensure that the neighborhood and community centers are developed with minimal impact on surrounding land uses are consistent with community character and assure pedestrian and vehicular access. Next slide, please. Um, and we keep, and we keep going. Urban Design Policy Number Nineteen, maintain design standards and land use plans for neighborhood centers, community centers, and the Central Business District that are based on the following principles. And the one that's relevant is on slightly views such as heavy machinery, storage areas, loading docks, and parking areas should be screened from the view of adjacent uses and from arterials. And Urban Design Policy Twenty, which is to maintain specific regulations for designated aesthetic corridors and boulevards that provide performance standards to adequate adequately screen heavier manufacturing industrial-type developments that have exterior clutter, store, um, including exterior storage, exterior heavy equipment, exterior fabrication and assembly. Now, I will point out that the um, the River District SAP does not really call this out as an aesthetic corridor. It's supposed to be a greenway as defined in in the uh, River District SAP, but that is River District, but a a greenway does seem to be the equivalent of an aesthetic corridor. And s- again, since I don't have, I don't have comparable definitions in the regulations, um, I will say that that is my, that is my interpretation. Next slide, please. Um, so, uh, with this application, the burden was on the applicant to demonstrate that if that if a change in economic, technological, or land use conditions occurred to warrant the proposed amendment, or if the proposed amendment will be compatible with adjacent land uses, or if the proposed mitigations are sufficient to make the proposed amendments compatible with this surrounding land use. That the proposed amendment is not detrimental to the public good and/or that the proposed amendment is in the public interest. Um, next slide, please. So again, Planning Commission had the same findings that they had with the other uh, CPA Code Amendments. So uh, the CPA requirements were met, all the noticing requirements were met, the public was provided the opportunity to provide early and continuous participation. And I think that you have seen that both in the Planning Commission packet and all the comments that we received for that. All of the pla- comments that have been received, which I sent out today, since the Planning Commission hearing. And of course, all the public testimony that you've already had the benefit of hearing. Next slide, please. Planning Commission came to the following conclusions. And um, I want to preface this by saying that the that um, they also proposed some amendments to it. And so the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. And they reached this conclusion based upon the modifications that they're proposing. The proposed amendment is not warranted by a change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error. The proposed amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for a proposed use that was not previously addressed. And the proposed amendment is not deemed necessary as being in the public interest. Next slide, please. So they proposed, the Planning Commission proposed or recommended that the that the zoning be approved with modifications. And those modifications specifically were to delete the allowance for storage containers as a primary use and eliminating the design standards associated with those proposed storage, the the storage containers as a primary use. So that, those were the amendments that they made, and they felt that by eliminating those, it 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 um, it addressed the concerns related to uh, comprehensive plan inconsistencies. Next slide, please. The Hearing Examiner Pro Tem recommended that that the city council rezone the subject properties to RDO only if city council finds that the Comprehensive Plan land use map change should be approved and that the SAP should be amended to include the proposed RDO zone classifications. Um, a- and uh, next slide, please. So that's where we're at, yeah. And next slide, please. So that's where we're at, yeah.
Can we go back one slide? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, Lisa. You said only if or if?
Well, so her recommendation, the way it was phrased. Her recommendation was based on the presumption that you would find those two things. You can't approve the zone change if you don't approve the comprehensive plan land use map. Nor can you approve the zone change if you don't approve the regulations associated with that. New zoning designation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember done.
So to paraphrase that, each of these must be accepted. They cannot be separated and one chosen to not the other.
That is true, although as it relates to the language. In the development regulations, those could be modified. You actually also could potentially modify which of the properties would be included in this if you so chose. But that that would be a little bit more challenging.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, I I've definitely got some concerns about this. As I, as I looked at the different uses and as I look closer now at the at the map. It looks like all of the properties currently in the existing SAP are listed under RDR. Is that correct?
The only one that's not is the one that the one on the Noel District, yeah, the the Trailhead. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so with that being said, just going through the zoning matrix. I I see specifically agricultural product, craft sales and farmer's market. And the RDR is currently not permitted. So the question I have is, is is the current farm set up in violation of of that SAP designation?
So I do not believe that it is and probably and and again. Provided an interpretation related to the fact that it is a small scale farm, which meets the definition. Of the limited use for actively farmed. Again, one of the challenges is that there's not definitions in the River District SAP for these things. And so so that's that's pretty challenging. One of the things I will say is the crafts, the craft sales et cetera is not permitted. A farmer's market is not permitted, but they do have what they call the farm store, which is for. Members to come pick up their produce after they've, after they purchased a membership. I do think that that the the hearing before the hearing examiner. They spent a lot of time arguing that if the agricultural was allowed, then this. That their storage containers were actually processing, food processing. And again, there's some arguments to be made that 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 clearly is not allowed in the in the zoning matrix. If they're just washing and storing them. As long as they have a building permit and as long as they meet architectural design standards. And as long as they're not producing nuisance noises. I think that that is, that that is an allowed use, but the but as it's set up right now. There there are some things that would, in fact, they're in an enforcement situation right now with the storage containers, as I believe you're aware.
Yeah, was was there a permit for the buildings that they did erect there?
So, yes, there was. And so they they did get a permit for the greenhouse. And it did meet and first of all, they were trying to do it without a permit and we required that a building permit be issued. And so we finally got, they submitted the building permit. We finally permitted that. The farm store building was permitted. And they now are in the process of, they've just submitted plans. For a storage structure that's going to be set back 30 feet from the property line. Right now, they're, I think, 10 feet away. That would be that for that processing, then they were going to have. Internal HVAC, so I think it would probably eliminate that. We still have some problems with it. They still have to go through architectural design review, but it appears to meet, it appears that it will likely meet that. They also still have some issues with snow loading, but but again, we just literally just received the application.
I I noticed also espresso stand is listed as something that would be permitted if the zoning changed. And then just going along with a lot of the the comments that we got in from citizens about vehicles driving on that path. And you know, the noise and things like that. I would say I just have a lot of concerns about moving forward. And if if the current use is permitted, then what are the plans? I I realize that in the application, there are no listed plans, that there's nothing. But but if Mr. Frank had said that the farm had been planned for 10 years. And there hadn't been any any other applications leading up to the establishment of that farm. I I just have some some concerns about it.
Oh, and and again, we've kind of been processing this in a reaction mode. Because as we're learning about it, we're reaching out to them saying, it needs a permit. It needs a permit. Yeah, this needs a permit too. So that's, that has been the case. But again, they they are moving forward, but what I've just shared with you is all we know about the plans at this point.
Right, any other questions, comments for Lisa?
All right, not hearing any. We will go ahead and close this workshop. Like Lisa said, the public hearing will be on the nineteenth at six P M. Next workshop is the 2024 Proposed Budget and Capital Facilities Plan. Looks like Kyle is making his way up to the podium.
All right, Mayor, Council. Thank you. So a little bit of a refresher from our last meeting. We had a couple of edits to the budget, including the salary schedule summary to account for the civil service secretary and the chief examiner. Couple of tweaks to our operations and maintenance line items. We had the buildings and structures line item for the PD and library windows that carry over from 2023 to 2024. And we are also increasing the beginning balance to reflect a net zero in 2024 for that expense that's carried over. Streets Fund and Streets Capital Fund, so we're increasing budgeted revenues for the collection of utility tax. From a budgeted zero percent to one percent for electric, gas, garbage. Cable and telephone utility tax. We are reinstating the $200,000 interfund transfer to the Streets Capital Fund and updating ending balances of each fund. Again, with the Streets Fund, we are increasing the utility services from 60,000 to 80,000 as we had discussed at the last meeting. We have updated the. The suggested arboretum improvements to the unfunded projects list. Inclusion of the community events permit application fees in their fee schedule. And so based on the discussion at the last meeting, I think that leaves us with any final discussion we wanted to have in terms of funding for the library. And kind of parsing the ordinance and kind of how it's historically been, I guess. How historically it's been implemented. And so we will continue that discussion. I'll be, I'll kind of leave it to Council to give us a direction for tonight.
Questions, comments?
I see a couple of people waiting to raise their hand.
All right, I'll start.
Councilmember Cargill.
Uh, thank you. So I spent a lot of time going through the ordinance and the the numbers here, Kyle. So I just want to make sure I have this right based on our last meeting. We've got seven sixteen called for in the budget proposal. If we are at 23.8 of everything of of the entire property tax. World for the city, we'd be at seven twenty-six.
Correct.
Okay, so then I went and looked at. Specifically, as Councilmember Foyer pointed out, five eighteen thirty thirty-one. Which has the anticipated increase of 10,000 and it says in the notes. Due to the additional library building. And then. Here and then five, five eighteen thirty forty-one zero zero. Which has is basically being kept at sixty. From the appropriated sixty and twenty-three. And again, it says to accommodate the new library building. Right?
Correct, yeah.
All right, so then I also went and looked in to to see the total outlay of the. Numbers that we were looking at for the. For the architectural fees. And that was one eighty seven ninety-four.
Correct.
So ten each roughly is I guess what we're looking at in both of those previous two funds that I mentioned. And then the the one eighty-two. What, you know, I I I'm gonna have to disagree with with Councilmember Foyer on this. The the ordinance says very specifically of the city's total property tax levy rate. So to me, the word total means it has to be all of it. All that we send, whether, all that we collect, whether it goes to the county, comes back or not. So to me, the number has to be seven twenty-six. But having said that, I also think if you look specifically at the ordinance. It says that it's got to be operations, capital and administrative support. And it doesn't really give us a lot of wiggle room for that. So when I added those to the seven sixteen that we have in there, we're at nine twenty-six, seven ninety-four. Which if you're just looking at the property tax, that's thirty point three percent. So I I I guess I don't have a question, but I just wanted wanted to confirm those numbers are correct. And then just state, you know, very clearly that the ordinance says the total. It doesn't say after it's brought back from the county or whatever like.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so seven twenty-six then is the target number based on the twenty-three point eight. That's in the ordinance.
Absolutely, yeah. So no, the all those numbers are correct and I'll couch that in. The decision to purchase the library building, the future library building. So that happened in 2022. We are redirecting the lease payments from the purchase of that building to the Library Capital Building. So we are funding the design with lease revenue from the purchase of the capital. Or from the purchase of the future library building. And so you'll see in Fund three thirty. I might, let me look it up.
And Kyle, just note, I I I asked Janie to come up as well to be part of the discussion.
So on Fund three thirty, Library Capital, I'll give you all a page number here in one second. Page eighty-eight. Is Library Capital Fund Resources. And so we have under capital outline, we are under revenue, we have revenue collected from current lease. Will be used for facility upgrades. And so we're budgeting about eighty-four thousand. For that, we collected the same amount last year and then for a portion of 2022 as well. So those, that revenue and historically, to your point, yes, we have processed interfund transfers. Prior to the purchase of the future library building for capital expenses.
So the eighty-four that's in there right now as the earnings, other earnings, that's coming from the lease.
Correct, yep. And so we have a beginning balance of two twenty. So we have the total resources for this fund is three hundred and four thousand.
Right.
And so you and you, so we're using that fund and that revenue stream to finance the design.
Right.
Not necessarily property tax, to your point. I mean, yes, in a way, yes, because we used $675,000 of general fund rev revenues. Or funds towards the purchase of the building. Back in 2022. And so, I mean, to that point, there is no statistical measure that we can show that we're beholden to this ordinance. Because our budget in 2022 was 1.3 million, which would have been forty-six percent of property tax.
Jan, Janie, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on anything you.
So the only thing I wanted to add is we were referencing some of Jen's line items. That for maintenance and that sort of thing at the library. Each year I have to go in and turn into the state library. How much we spend on maintenance or professional services for the library that's out of Jen's budget. That light item encompasses police and library. So if it says 60,000, not all 60,000 of that is going to the library.
Right.
They will note in it, this is police expenses, this is library expenses.
Yeah, so I just think she notes that.
Yeah, I just think it's, sounds a little bit deceptive deceptive if it thinks, if you think all 60,000 are.
I'm saying the increases that we're talking about. The anticipated, this is what it says in in the notes, the anticipated increase in facility supplies due to the additional library building. So basically increasing from thirty appropriated this year to forty. So in other words, a $10,000 difference.
And it's very, very well possible, given our timeline, that those won't even come to pass for 2024. Because we're gonna be, we probably won't be doing any building and redesign, actual work until 25. But we budgeted for it.
So just a little bit of history on to your point. Where we're at with the city's portion of property tax collection versus the levy amount. And so in 2024, we are proposing 23.5 percent of the seven sixteen. So I I just made it the seven sixteen.
Yeah.
We can, we can have a discussion about how the purchase of the future library building essentially set us off course. With compliance with this ordinance. But so the seven sixteen is 23.5. If we are using our budgeted amount, that would set at twenty-six percent. For 2023, for the entire levy, it would have been twenty-two percent. The city's portion of the property tax levy would have had us at twenty-five percent. For 2022, same twenty-two percent. So six hundred and twenty-five thousand of 2.8 million or twenty-five percent if we're using. Just the city's portion. So we're, we are dancing around this number. Through one lens, we are in compliance. Through another lens, we are above appropriations.
So I would, I would prefer to to keep it out of the compliant, non-compliant language, right? So the the ordinance, as it was passed in 2012, did not contemplate a new library building. At that time. And so the question is, what should it be going forward? That's a legitimate discussion to have and that's a discussion we should have. But we can't have it between now and when we need to pass the budget this year. And so what we are saying is that the historic interpretation of this ordinance. Has been such that we've applied it in a way where we've taken the total property tax levy. We've used the percentage outlined in the ordinance and and we've complied. I just broke my own rule. We complied with the ordinance in that way. So what should it be going forward, contemplating a new, larger footprint with a growing population and usership? That's, that's a discussion we need to have in the context of developing the 2025 budget and going forward.
I I think there definitely needs to be some clarifications on this going forward. But to Mark's point, doing that between now and when the budget needs to pass, I think it's a great project for the first quarter to really dig into it. Because it is, you know, eleven years later, right? Things have changed. You know, in our, in our future, you know, projects have changed in eleven years.
I jump in.
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry, I have to disagree. We all budget based on our take home pay, not our gross pay. And that's the reason why I even suggested, where are we at with the? I asked Kyle, where are we at? What's that number that we're using as the measure? So I'm only using that analogy for my reasoning. Doesn't mean that I want to take money away from the library. I'm just saying, if we're gonna follow the ordinance, because that's what we're bound to do is follow the ordinance. So now it comes down to interpretation. And I'll say this, as you read the ordinance in relations to capital outlay. When we bought that building, we blew that up. You're gonna soon talk about remodeling it, you're gonna blow that up. So I don't have, I don't have an issue. Agreeing to the budget as it's proposed, as long as there's a meaningful conversation. Like the mayor said, in the first quarter to address those problems. Because if you leave the ordinance as it is with that capital language in there. I mean, it it will be brutal.
I mean, it it will be brutal on that budget. So there's, it's a way bigger discussion. You like that we have time for before we need to pass this budget by the end of the year. Um, so. That's all I would suggest.
Any other comments, questions?
Oh, one last thing.
Sure.
Uh, and as I would, Kyle will attest, you can amend the budget anytime.
Right. Which is.
But real quick, before we get back, does anybody else have any before we go back to? All right, go ahead.
I I don't disagree, I'm just saying, I I think that's part of the reason why. We should move. From, from the the baseline of the ordinance to increasing. Via an amendment rather than the other way around. So I guess my thought would be that we take, we take the. Set aside the capital outlet, which I think is a big issue because it says capital, right, in the ordinance, but. We take the five eighteen thirty thirty one down to what it is. This year or recommended from Jen. Um, and the other one, back to where it was, and then. We proceed with by February, you know, name a date, by February twenty eighth or whatever. We ask city staff to come back with us, to us with recommendations on. Okay, here's the number that it needs to be, here's our recommendations on where it needs to come from and what it should say, and then we go back in and say, okay, we're gonna u- update it to say. Thirty percent or we're gonna take it out to take the property tax portion. Language out of there after we get those recommendations back. Instead of doing it the exact opposite way, because. As we often talk about, we made an oath to defend the ordinances and enforce the ordinances of the city, and we're not really doing that. Regardless of why we got here.
But there's a lot that we're not, we're not enforcing.
I, I realize that. But still, I mean, that's an issue.
So you, so you, sorry.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So I think that. If we adopt the budget as it is today, um, I don't, I don't, and I'm not a lawyer, interpreted as us being in violation of the ordinance because. Section two B. Um, says that upon a determination, the best interests of the city of Liberty Lake are being served. Increase, decrease, evoke, recall all, any portion of the total appropriations provided for the Liberty Lake Library. Provided the same as done by ordinance approved by a vote of one or more than the majority of the council. So by approving the budget ordinance, we are approving the. Increase and it, I don't see it, again, I'm not a lawyer, I'd look for Sean's interpretation there to guide us. I don't see us being in violation because I don't think that one precludes the other, it's just a different interpretation.
Sean, you wanna weigh in on that real quick?
So I think there's several issues i- in play here, I I agree with Mark, I don't think it's violation compliant, noncompliant. Um, I think we're getting into wordsmithing and then versus the application or interpretation on a practical budgeting perspective. Um, the ordinance allows for the council to make changes. Um, but I think we need to look back from, you know, when this ordinance was passed, the intent was to provide the library dedicated funding source. Because each year the budgeting was different. And so the the premise was to allow the Board of Trustees to work through. Um, some funding that they know, that they knew that they would have some budgeting. Uh, for budget purposes. That was the intent behind the ordinance now relative to operations capital, library capital is a budget fund, budgeted fund. Um, but keep in, keep in mind, everyone talks about the library building, it's, the library doesn't own the building. The city owns the building, the library will use the building. So it's a city asset, not a library asset, so to the extent of the purchase. Look back when this was, when the building was purchased, it wasn't purchased by the library, libraries is like any other department relative to its operations. Um, but the the city is the one that owns it, so when you're looking at library capital, I think it's. A misnomer to say that the library capital is gonna fund the purchase of the building because it's not a library asset. Um, so from that perspective, um, the twenty three point eight percent. Um, is subject to revision, um, the language in three A says it's subject to the terms set forth in this ordinance. And as Councilmember Kurtz references to A allows for changes to be made through an ordinance, which could be done through a budget ordinance. Um, budget ordinances have been passed every year as long as the city's been in place. And, um, library expenditures or operations or funding for it. Um, have been passed through an ordinance, which is the budget ordinance to allow certain funding. Um, and certainly since two thousand twelve, which may have been up or down, increased or decreased. From the twenty three point eight percent, so when Kyle's talking about, it's been all over the map, it's been done through an ordinance, through the budget ordinance. And it's been consistent with what the language is in in uh, ordinance one nineteen. Now, to the extent as Mark talks about, that the council wants to have some specifics and as Councilmember Foyer's brought up, gross. Net, what have you, and be more specific, certainly that's dialogue to have amongst the council, and if you want to make a change of the ordinance, you can certainly do that. Um, but I think from the perspective of. Consistency with the ordinance, I have not seen that taking place, nor do I see that now.
Thank you. All right, I think, did you wanna pop back in? Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. Look at this item, you know, there's a lot of discussion that we want to go according to the. Orders and stuff, and I think everybody would be on that that page, we haven't been doing that in many applications. What I'm seeing here is we have really have two choices, if if the twenty three point eight, one way of looking at it, if we're not. Abiding by that and we're spending, spending more than that. Then I see two choices, correct me if I'm misunderstanding this. One, we could go to, take the budget that we have. And approve it with the idea if we're off by, I believe you quote about sixty thousand dollars could be.
Yeah.
If that's the case, we could earmark sixty thousand dollars out of the budget that we don't need to maybe later. Into the year, which we would have time to make these changes, that's one option. Or another option is, is to go ahead and approve it the way it is on a contingent that, let's say, by the end of February. March, whatever it's going to be that the council has addressed this and made the changes. Because when it comes to budget, time is of the essence. You know, we have to. Uh, vote on it, so I think those are two options, if I'm misunderstanding those. Somebody point, point that out.
Well, if there's no other. Um, questions or comments, I guess we have to look, you know, is is there a motion to? Discuss the ordinance change in twenty twenty, in first quarter twenty twenty four, is that kind of what you're, what you're looking for, Kyle, or what?
Uh, yeah, and I I honestly, I would appreciate some clarity, so we know twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five and beyond, we. Here's our number, or we remove it altogether, it's whatever the will of the council is.
Mayor, if I may interject. I don't want to create more ambiguity, Kyle. I think, I think the issue is if the council wants to have dialogue about the twenty three point eight percent, it would be addressing. The funding mechanism within the ordinance. So I think it would be if they want to discuss it within the first quarter, as been suggested, that I think that's more appropriate. And you can work through the specifics of what the council may want between now and and that time.
All right, I saw a hand up somewhere, Councilmember Kurtz.
Well, I I guess it's just a comment, I mean, we have, we have this ordinance on our agenda tonight. And I I'm just not sure what sense it makes to potentially go through the process and approve an ordinance that we would then go back and. Potentially change again in the first quarter. So I I just want to say that out loud to everybody that if we're, if we have these questions about this. Why wouldn't we maybe pause and have this whole rounded discussion sometime? In the next quarter, if we want to address it versus amending and amending and amending.
Okay. Councilmember Van Orman.
I'm coming in. Been here from the very beginning. And I'm hearing out here and I don't want to hear it. When we set this ordinance up, it hasn't changed much. One nineteen ordinance has only been changed twice. With clarification. Twenty three point eight was based on fifty cents per thousand, based on two thousand and one. That's where we were, that's a percentage of budget that we had. You make a very good point. Capital expenses, that is not the library's. Uh, responsibility, that is ours. If we went in for a capital project, it was the city that purchased that for our library. I'm happy to do it, I I think that that's a great way to spend our money. But as far as changing the ordinance itself, I think twenty three point eight percent of the budget covers it quite well. That's my two cents until I get further.
Councilmember Spencer.
I'll just add that, uh, because it's a percentage, as the city grows, that that amount of money grows because it's a percentage, so. I I I think we can certainly have that discussion in the first quarter or whatever, but. Uh, again, by setting a percentage, that amount's gonna grow as the city grows.
Okay, any other comments? So.
Your initial comment I would like to say is that, um, I would be very disappointed if we finish this meeting tonight and not have something set up. And, uh, for the council that a certain timeframe, we look at this in two thousand and twenty four. Because if not, we're gonna have the same discussion in two thousand and twenty four and try to look at a date. I mean, it's appropriate that we decide now.
Yeah, I I think it doesn't sound like anybody objects to the first quarter, so we'll make sure we get it on the advanced agenda. To make that happen. I don't know, do we necessarily have a motion?
Coming agenda items.
Yep, yeah, that's what we'll do. Okay. So does that give you, give you a direction?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Any, so just to put a bow on the twenty twenty four proposed budget as a whole, are there any other questions? That we'd like to chat through now, uh, prior to getting to.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Van Orman. As we're looking at the budget, we're looking at approximately eighteen positions. Can we sustain that in five years? Knowing that we're gonna have a build out and revenue is gonna go like this.
Uh, in terms of, oh, what specifically?
Specifically of all of our employees, are we going to be able to sustain?
Yeah.
An additional eighteen employees.
Absolutely, yes, I, we have to, I mean.
Well, Kyle's looked at the forecast out six.
Six year, we have a six year rolling forecast, and so we'll, we'll update that with all the information that we had during our discussions.
Any other questions for Kyle? All right, not hearing any, moving on, general business consent agenda, Mayor Protam, you're up.
Okay, this time I'll make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items ten A. B, C, D, E, F, and G with hopefully some follow up conversation after the motion's been approved.
Oh.
Some recognition.
Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah, yeah, and actually in Lions Club wants to, I want to make sure they have some time too.
Second.
Anyway, motion and second, um, for the consent agenda, um, so moved.
Yeah, I guess, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we had a motion and a second, so, um, consent agenda does not require any discussion, but just in case. All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero, so as Mayor Protam pointed out, I want to make a couple of recognitions first. Uh, I know we, we've had some very patient members of the Lions Club here, so if you'd like to say a few words and. We also want to, uh, thank you for your participation with the city and partnering with us, come on, you guys. You've been sitting there long enough. Get up, okay, stand up and be recognized.
Perfect, I only have like a three hour speech. Just, just to make it even. Hi, my name is Bill Ash, I'm a president of Liberty Lake Lions Club. Uh, we've been an organization, uh, in Liberty Lake for over ten years now. We've been active in the community in a variety of different ways. Um, our club raises money through silly things like, um, bed races, um. We sell Christmas stocks, stockings, uh, we've had garage sales and, uh, this month we're selling, um, holiday nuts, so. If you go to our website, yes, nuts, delicious tasty nuts, you know, like. Peanuts. So.
Peasants.
Yeah, it, it's been a long day, so, um. Although, oh. No, we don't. All the money that we collect, um, goes right back into our community, we don't, we don't have any administrative costs at all. Um, everything is volunteered. We are active in that we check, um, people for vision and hearing needs. And we provide them with hearing aids if they cannot afford it or eyeglasses if they cannot afford it. Uh, we also sponsored, um, kids to go to, um. Trips to learn about their diabetic needs. So, um, Camp Sticks is one of the things that we do, and it's kids from the community that, um, wouldn't have that opportunity otherwise. We also collect glasses at different places throughout the the city and those glasses, uh, we refurbish. And repurpose and give them to other people that, uh, would need those. In two thousand and fifteen, we made, uh, a s- a special garden in, uh, uh, nature place at Metalwood. Arboretum called the Century Garden, and that's just right outside on a little path out here. You might notice that when you first go down, you'll see the Century Garden there, and there's two benches that sit out front, those are both donated. Uh, from Liberty Lake Lions Club, and we do that through collecting plastic. Um, and then. And we have a deal with Trex that for every so many pounds of plastic we collect. We get another bench and we'll be providing those through that, uh, same little walkway that we have down there. We also, uh, support, um, different things, the community gardens, the historical monument for, um. Stephen Liberty and planting trees in that little walkway. And what we're here to do today is to provide you. Some little seed money, because what we'd like to do is to have a place for people to actually go on that path besides this walk through it. To go through and and have a little picnic area. So we're donating three benches and we have a check and. Would you present them with our checklist? For sixty three hundred dollars, and I think the benches bring it, the total to around ten thousand dollars. For the community.
Bunches and tables.
Bunches and tables, yes, and as, as. We found out, uh, that, uh, you've been also generous to include in the capitals facility plan. Um, some gazebles that would go over those benches and then make that a nice. Uh, area for our families to go in and actually have a picnic together and actually enjoy the outdoors in Liberty Lake. So.
Again, we we appreciate your partnership and especially now that the new nets are gonna be going up soon at at the driving range, it'll be a little bit safer for everybody. Who sits down there and walks down there, but you guys have been partners, great partners for a long time and and we, we, I think we all look forward to. The upcoming project, uh, there in the arboretum and just make it even more beautiful and more useful to our residents.
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay, yes.
Before we get into resolutions, we may want to call for a motion to extend.
Oh, yes. And and I also want to, real quick, before we call for that motion, um, I, we just want to also recognize, um, our two appointments. Um, appointment of Joni Hay to fill the adjunct position on Parks and Arts Commission. Um, Jen and I, uh, did the interview and we're really impressed with her events. Um, background, especially now that we're going to be splitting public works and kind of. Parks and open spaces and events, really looking forward to the added expertise in there to, um, keep. Um, bolstering our our events here in Liberty Lake. And the appointment of John, reappointment of John Barr to, um, for to for position two on Parks and Arts Commission, he's the gentleman who. Does the the garden there at the corner of of Madison, um, and Mission in front of the library, and so he's been a great asset, so we have, um. Reappointed him, so. Now, if somebody would like to make a motion to extend the meeting, we'll entertain that.
Extend the meeting to ten thirty?
Weird.
Thirty, thirty.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to to extend the meeting to ten thirty, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are extended to ten thirty. All right, challenge is on. All right, we don't have any general business, no, um, do we have any council comments? Over and above what we've had before, okay, no public hearings or appeals, and so now we are into resolutions. Kelsey, resolution twenty three two fifty five, please.
Resolution number twenty three dash two fifty five, a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington. Approving the final plat of Tchutina Seventh Edition located in portions of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter. And the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section ten township twenty five N, range forty five E W M. Liberty Lake, Washington, file two thousand and fifteen dot P L zero 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 one G.
Okay, that's always a mouthful, thank you. All right, um, so do we have a motion and a second for this resolution and then Lisa, I think it's still here, if anybody has any questions after we have the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash two five five.
Second.
Yeah, it's motion and a second by Councilmember Dunn. All right, do you guys have any questions or comments for for Lisa before we take the vote on this? All right, not hearing or seeing any?
Mayor.
Yes, oh, yep, thank you. For resolutions and second read ordinances, we do go to the public real quick and ask if you have any public comments on this specific resolution. So I'll open that up real quick, if anybody here in chambers has a comment about this resolution, please raise your hand and. Take your comment at the podium. Exciting stuff here, all right, not hearing any, we'll go to, and I'll take the vote of the council, all in favor of approving resolution twenty three dash two five five, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. Resolution is twenty three dash two five six.
Resolution number twenty three dash two fifty six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. Adopting legislative priorities for use during the state legislature's two thousand twenty four regular session and any subsequent special sessions.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash two five six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by council member Dunn, any questions? I just do want to thank the council for their, and city administrator for their hard work on this, it's great to finally have our very first legislative agenda published. In the history of, of the city, and we've been kind of spreading the word to our, our partner organizations. And the, our state representatives are anxiously waiting to, to get this, so we'll get this in their hands tomorrow, assuming we get approved, so again, any public comment on. The approval of our resolution for our legislative agenda for two thousand twenty four. It gets, okay. So all, so going to the council, all in favor of approving resolution twenty three dash two five six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Up to ordinances, and so we made a change, so ordinance eleven one nineteen D, second read.
Ordinance number one nineteen D. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, amending ordinance number one nineteen V, establishing the Liberty Lake Public Library and repealing any provisions in conflict thereof.
Okay.
Sure, I'll start, I just have one thing to say, I've been saying it from the beginning. The first line of the ordinance says, whereas the City of Liberty Lake is a non-chartered code city formed pursuant to R C W title thirty five A, operating under the mayor council form of government. R C W chapter thirty five A point one two, that's been my reference from the beginning. That's where I'm at. All I have to say on that.
All right, I'll make a motion to. Approve the ordinance. I guess that, is that where we're at?
No.
There's, there's not a motion to approve.
There's not a motion. That's what you were asking for.
You can do that.
So we could have the discussion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance one nineteen D to include the following, which I will read, but is also is outlined in the draft that the council already has a copy of. In section two F, amending and adding language that says the mayor or the council shall not propose or approve any library policy. That implicitly or explicitly allows or authorizes censorship, nor any library policy that may infringe upon rights and liberties afforded to individuals by and through any applicable local, state, or federal laws. And in section six G three, the Board of Trustees shall not propose or adopt any library policy that implicitly or explicitly allows or authorizes censorship, nor any library policy that may infringe upon rights and liberties afforded to individuals. By and through any applicable local and state or federal laws, and adding the language that references in six G to. Adopt revised Liberty Lake library policy subject to sections two E and F, F is the addition. Okay, do we have a second, we have a second by council member Dunn, okay, we'll open for discussion with regards to the requested amendment to add section F. And its associated changes and under section six G. Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, so, as everybody had a copy of the attachment. The proposed language has been reviewed by our city attorney, city attorney as required procedurally. The proposed language is simply a good faith attempt to get to the middle that was previously suggested by council member Cargill. The mayor entered veto, and an effort Mayor Protem has made over the last twelve months. At the last meeting, one of our citizens said something to the effect of, just tell us what you're going to do, if you're going to ban books to restrict access, own it. The citizens have been clear, they do not want censorship or restriction of access to books in the Liberty Lake Library. The Board of Trustees has been clear about their concerns, however, to this point, any language they've suggested it has been excluded from the different iterations of this ordinance. The council gave their best and final offer with one nineteen D. So I think at this point, if there truly is a spirit of the middle, this is the point that we're at, in the middle, there is negotiation, everyone takes a step towards one another. Today, everybody understands that the council has the authority to do what they want and the votes to back it up. So what I'm advocating for today on behalf of the citizens is restraint. The council can in fact have exactly what they want, exactly what they've asked for, control and oversight over the policies of the library, while at the same time. Ensuring that the public's concern about censorship are addressed in the ordinance. This ordinance, this amendment states out loud what the public has been asking for. Does the council commit to uphold the law and not allow censorship in the library? Your support of this amendment will send a clear message to the community that you're true to your word, and this is not about banning books. Over the last year or so, council member Cargill, Mayor Protem have concretely advocated for this body voting in favor of decisions our boards and commissions make. Going so far as to say they're volunteers in our community and their hard work and deliberations on behalf of the community should respected, should be respected. The board voted five to zero to support this language, and I hope that equivalent respect for boards and commissions extends to the Library Board of Trustees today. And further, I hope the council will actively vote uphold the law and to support freedom, particularly the freedom to read.
Thank you, all right, any further comments, council member Dunn?
I speak in support of the amendment, specifically language identifying local, state, and federal law. I believe that consistent with the oath of office that each of us as elected officials has taken, I would find it difficult to not support this amendment, thank you.
Thank you, all right, councilmember Cargill.
Well. I, I think the, the amendment is totally unnecessary, and let me explain a couple of reasons why. One, there's nothing in the ordinance right now that allows for the banning of books. There's nothing in there that says that the city council or the city or the library board can ban books. If we wanted this language in the ordinance, you had three opportunities to do it. You had the opportunity when it was amended the first time, you had the opportunity when we voted on it the first time, and you had the opportunity when we were talking about mayor, overriding the mayor's veto. This was in, not this exact language, but there was language in the previous ordinance that said we would not ban books. Part of the reason for that was because of the fear of a part of the resolution that said, or pardon the ordinance, excuse me, that said we were going to go back and retroactively look at policies. This new ordinance doesn't say that. This new ordinance does not say the council will go back and retroactively approve policies, and Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, but. The moment this is signed into law, if it is signed into law, we move forward from that point because there's no retroactive language in there, is that accurate, Sean?
Correct.
So, there's no reason, I believe, for the city council to adopt even more stringent language than what the library board has already adopted with their circulation policy. We are not going back and looking at the circulation policy, now, if they come to us and change something in the circulation policy. We can have that discussion, or if they come to us and change the hours of operation in the library, or a policy that has to do with the library that's outside of the circulation policy, then we'll have discussions, but there's nothing in here. That says the city council can ban books, and. I, I just want to speak to this idea that this is a compromise. The four council members, myself, council member Spencer, councilman Foyer, and councilmember Van Orman, we've bent over backwards trying to compromise. We put this language in, then it was taken out. We were told that this council shouldn't be writing policy, so we put in language that said that we will only approve or reject. At the beginning of the process, we were told that the council shouldn't be, or excuse me, that, that we should have a liaison. That could attend library board meetings in an attempt to prove, improve communications, so we added that, then we were told the council shouldn't be able to ban books, so we added that language in. Then we were told the retroactive language wasn't acceptable, so that language has been taken out. Then it was said that the council shouldn't vote because too many of the council members were appointed council members as opposed to elected council members, so now we have an entire body that has been elected by the citizens. So I think this notion that there's been no compromise, I would, I would ask, what is the compromise that has been put forward from the other point of view, the other side? I don't see any compromise in here, it's no, 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 no. So that's my point of view, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else comment?
I'll just make a.
Quick, councilmember Van Orman?
Quick fifty minute pop. Here we go. You know, when we started this in two thousand one. We, we had the policies coming before us, whether, you know, anyone believes it or not, rechecked with our attorney, Stanley Schwartz, and he. Said absolutely, that's exactly how we set this up. The Attorney General opinion that this was based on was from May twelfth nineteen fifty, it has not changed. A G O nineteen fifty number two seventy four supports in favor of code cities operating under R C W thirty five A. It has operated in this capacity for twenty years. The governing body is the elected seven member city council. Several cities that have a library as a department of the city, Mount Vernon, Tacoma, Port Townsend, Pullman, Anacortes. Liberty Lake, Aberdeen, Puyallup, Camas, and others, we are one of them, we have a municipal library. Ordinance one nineteen was adopted in October two thousand three, it was changed in June of two thousand twelve with ordinance one nineteen A. Why did we change it? Because the original ordinance, it was shall appropriate funds for the support of the library. So in two thousand twelve, it was updated to encompass a percentage of the property tax to secure funding for the longevity. To reflect what two thousand one date of incorporation versus total levy rate. Twenty three point eight shall cover not May, library operations, library capital expenditures, and administrative support. Further, it went to describe three percent library capital expense and three percent administrative overhead. So six percent of the twenty three point eight, I don't know how much clearer that can get. The authority of the city council, that was added back in two thousand fifteen with ordinance one nineteen B. Added in the original la, language to approve contracts related to public library. Including but not limited to the acquisition, sale, or disposition of library property unless otherwise delegated to the mayor. Written Jeremy Stroud, talking to the Library Board of Trustees about creating policy on eleven thirty two thousand twenty. If the Library Board of Trustees advisory, final approval may be required from the governing authorities. Such is what took place when the reconsideration of library materials was put into place. If the patron wishes to appeal the decision of the Library Board of Trustees, he may ask to have his request reviewed by the Liberty Lake City Council. The city council will provide a final decision in writing to the patron, that vote showed the process worked in May of two thousand twenty two. With the majority of the council members upholding the Library Board of Trustees recommendation. However, the reconsideration process was changed by the Board of Trustees to remove the section, and the policy was never approved by the city council. We heard the change in October of two thousand twenty two, no discussion prior. It's a basis of this ordinance, one nineteen D, that is before us tonight. According to the Attorney General and what is on file for the secretary. The secretary or the city council is a governing body for the City of Liberty Lake, elected to give the opportunity to hear residents' concerns. The city residents pay for the library and should have a say, otherwise it's taxation without representation. One nineteen D, it's clarifying the ordinance. Section two, approve all library policies with a simple majority vote. F, appoint a city council member to attend Board of Trustee meetings as an observer, you realize that we did this until two thousand thirteen. Matter of fact, Keith Colpison was the last one to be able to do that as a liaison. That's before we went ahead and switched to workshops instead of committees, which of course Dan Dunn is wanting to bring that back, kudos for you. Section five, quarterly and annual report as well as adding the uses of any computer and technology equipment. You realize that the Board of Trustees is still doing exactly what they've done for the last twenty years. They make the policy, we approve them, nothing has changed. There, there's no banning of books inside of this ordinance, I, I don't know where all of you are coming from, but there's no, nothing in there. That's my two cents worth.
Point of order, yes, ma'am, I think we're supposed to be talking about the amendment in particular, if we can.
Thank you.
So I'd like to get to the merits of the amendment and have a discussion about the amendment, if we can focus on that, please.
All right. Next comment? Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll say something in regards to F, I'm not in favor of that, and the main reason is this, that I see that as a policy. That I think that the ordinance can be very, very clear, if anything that I've been a strong advocate on is that I go back with the library when I was attending their meetings. This is early as two thousand twelve, before anybody in this, this council right now, or probably in the audience ever attended those meetings, I was there. This, I can remember in the past, there was two occasions, one particular occasion where some literature came up that the, the trustees were uncomfortable with, because somebody wanted to bring that, take it out of there. I sat in those, two of the meetings where the trustees dealt with that, the librarian dealt with that, and decided that they weren't going to participate in that. And gave that information to the individual, can't remember who the person was, and that individual was satisfied with that, and never went to council. Never came to council, so it's not like it hasn't been dealt with in the past. I'm comfortable with the way it's written, except for F, I do feel that that can be policy. That after we have the ordinance, that to be able to sit down with the council, even though that we've done that, and also with the trustees, they've participated in. And look at how that's going to be, and we're collaborating, because for twenty years, we've had this in the city, and it's worked very well. And suddenly it's changed, and it's really changed because of misunderstanding. Misunderstanding is where we are today, you know, and I don't care if you shake your head or not, I've been an advocate since day one that this city should not be banning books or literature. Because every time we get into that, the news media shows up, because we talk about that. If we weren't talking about that, or if it didn't come up that the council wants to ban books and literature, no one would be here, we wouldn't have all the people in this room. If we were to say we're not banning books and literature, what it does is it puts a period on the end of this situation. And what it also does is that it allows the citizens to realize that we are not going to entertain that, and doing so, the likelihood of getting into a lawsuit is nil. Is nil. If it is left not dealt with on how this council, council, the seven of who were designated and elected by the citizens of this town. To abide by the rules and regulations that we raise our hand to and swear to. On it, if we don't eventually identify that we are not going to be banning books and literature through, I believe, the process after this. I, I, I think that this is never going to end, it's going to continue on and on again, you know, there's seven individuals that are elected by the citizens of this town. To be the legislative body and make all laws and policies, there's a period at the end of that statement, it's not a comma, it's not a question mark. It's a period. We're sitting here today, I believe I'm sitting here today, because we're dealing with what got out of hand and out of, a, a lot of finger pointing. That the council wants to ban books or the library wants to ban books. Let's move ahead, deal with this later on in a policy after the first year.
Again, keeping the comments to the suggested amendment by councilmember Kurtz, councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, I'll speak to the amendment. For me, I, I, I really don't have any issue with the verbiage that you proposed, but it's a policy verbiage, it's not, for me, it's not an ordinance worthy topic. Simply because the, the ordinance does one thing and policies do something different, and the problem that I've been trying to raise from the very beginning, and it. And the problem that I've been trying to raise from the very beginning, and it, it's been very gray, and it was stated, if you don't like the ordinance, fix it. So the problem with the ordinance is it doesn't clarify who makes the, the, who has the authority over the policies. So you can't, you can't even have a discussion with the Board of Trustees about policies, because our ordinance is broken, because it doesn't clarify. And that's all I've been trying to say from the beginning. So language like that, for me, i- i- in a policy, a library policy, I got no issues with any of that. But it doesn't belong in the ordinance, because the ordinance is a, 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 a different type of a document that doesn't get into the weeds on policies. So for that, for that reason, I, I, I like the language, but it just doesn't belong in the ordinance, so I'm going to vote against it.
Any further comments?
Before I go to a vote, I'll just, I'll just weigh in very briefly. A, the ordinance since two thousand and three, when it, when it was first put in place, has never said, and I understand it was practice, but it has never said that the co- that the council has to approve the policies put in place by the board. It has also always said, section six, Board of Trustees, powers and duties of the Board of Trustees shall have the power and duty to do the following. Section number two, adopt, revise Liberty Lake library policies subject. Yeah, sorry. There are some other, I'm reading the, a little bit of an edited version, but they have always had the power and duty to adopt and revise library policies. So, um, pointing that out, I don't have a vote in this situation. Councilmember Spencer.
I, I mean, with regards to those, those, uh, those points, I, I think as, as Councilmember Kurtz pointed out, we're not doing our job with all of the departments as far as approving policy, even though we should be. And so I, I almost feel like we're, uh, we're in the twilight zone in what, in what, um, in what municipality would citizens not want their elected representatives to have oversight over policy across the board? I ju- I, I can't, I, I mean, if you talk to people out in the community and say, what's, what's your frustration with the federal government? There, nobody's being held accountable. So, um, I, I think with regards to that, first of all, uh, the word policy is not listed in, in the ordinance up until this, up until this change. But as far as whether that was the practice when the city started or not, we're just codifying it. So, so the intent of, of thirty-five A was that we did have the authority to approve policy, and perhaps that was being practiced, and perhaps at some point that fell off. And perhaps because of the, uh, the composition of the council last year with several new members, uh, having an understanding based on us being told that we were going to have a conversation. This, this wasn't just us wish, ha- having wishful thinking. We were led to believe that we were going to have a conversation with the library board, and it sounds like, um, uh, Shawna mentioned that the, that the city attorney had advised them not to do that, so that's another conversation. But the fact is, we were led to believe we were going to have a conversation. They went ahead and updated their, their policy without having that conversation, so we were told. If you want to fix that, if you want to clarify that, you can do that in the ordinance. So I, I feel like that's really the, the intent, that's really what we're trying to accomplish here with, with this revised ordinance.
If there's no other comments on the, go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Want to recapitulate. I find it novel that elected officials are unwilling to commit that they will comply with applicable local, state, and federal law. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
And I'll just say, I, we make that oath when we're sworn in, that we're going to comply.
Councilmember Kurtz. So I think that the discussion about whether this is a policy or not being in an ordinance, um, I don't particularly see it as a policy, and if I did, I don't know that I would have put it in the ordinance either. I think that one of the things that we've done over the last year is react to things. And I think that through all of this, I think that this language gives us the opportunity to be proactive from this dais about whether the city of Liberty Lake, through an ordinance, which is a law, intends and to support or not support censorship in a library. Um, the library policies and procedures already are in line with that, but those policies were summarily excluded from being in here, being referenced at all. And so I think, again, it gives the, the citizens who've asked for this the same, it responds to their request. It responds to the Board of Trustees' concerns. Um, and again, I just, um, I echo Councilmember Dunn's concern that um, there's a hesitation or an unwillingness to put this in there.
Let me make one more comment.
Yep.
More than a year ago, the Library Board changed the policy so that book bans end with them. The ordinance that we're adopting here tonight codifies that. It basically says we're going to review policies going forward. There is no way this body can ban books if the book reconsideration doesn't come before us. It's already in place. The approve, or excuse me, the retroactive language was taken out. So we are not going back anymore and looking at the collection policy that the board already changed. We are looking at things going forward. And so for that reason, this language is not needed.
All right. Not seeing any more, um, given that this is a second read.
That, that's just the amendment, not the ordinance. You're just voting on the amendment.
Okay, because I was, I was gonna.
We haven't done a motion yet for that one, so all, all we're doing, we can vote on the amendment, citizen comments, for the main ordinance.
Okay, because I was gonna open up for.
We can do, we can do that on the main ordinance. Right now, all we have is the amendment.
All right, so hearing no further discussion, um, and I'll need hands to stay up on this. All in favor of approving the proposed amendment by Councilmember Kurtz, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, those opposed? All right, motion fails five to two. Kelsey, you got?
Oh, no, I, I wanted to make a motion.
Okay, hold on, let my image cap with Kelsey, make sure she's got the information she needs.
I have it, but one second before we start a new motion, so I can capture it.
Ready? Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to remove item F from the, uh, the version of the ordinance in the, in the agenda packet. And the reason for this, and this would be removing the language that says, appoint a city council member to attend Board uh, trustees' meetings as an observer. This is, I guess, twofold. Uh, when, when I came in, uh, I was told that it was recommended that city council members do not attend, uh, board and commission meetings, uh, because of undue influence, uh, that sort of thing. But also, the mayor and I actually, I believe, were in the same, uh, class during the AWC's annual conference here in Spokane this, this last summer, and the, I believe it was MRSC uh, gave the recommendation that you do not have liaisons to those, uh, boards and committees. So I would propose to strike that.
Right, so we have a motion on the floor to remove the appoint a city council member to attend Board of Trustees' meetings as an observer. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Kurtz? Any, uh, all right, we'll take discussion. Councilmember Cargill.
I'll just speak, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with this motion. I'm fine with removing it. The only reason we had to put it in to begin with was because of the negotiations and co- communications that we were having with the board, and that was suggested as a way to try to improve communication. But if, if the progress of the, of the council is to take that out, I think that's fine.
And obviously, the, the, the meeting recordings are all, should be all online as well. Next, Councilmember.
If I may say to that, I, I also am very comfortable removing that. The last time that we had a liaison with the library was in two thousand and eighteen, because I was that individual that was the liaison, because I had been so heavily involved with the library prior to that. I was also the individual that brought it forward to the council to eliminate that. The simple reason is that the difficulty that most of our council members work, and we're not in a position to have individuals attend these meetings. We used to have where there was an appointed council member assigned to each of these. The challenge was, and the recommendation, which is, I think, has worked very successfully, was have the board members come and give a report to the council. The challenge was to take a council member to suddenly attend one of these meetings and formulate their opinion and come back and give a report to the council. I thought that was anti-productive. So I'm really more than comfortable not having a representative there. And quite hon- honest, if I was a, a trustee, I would be offended at this point. I would be offended that, that anybody wants to have somebody there as a supervisor. So I'm very comfortable removing that.
Any other further comments? All right, not hearing any. Um, all in favor of removing item F uh, from the dra- draft agenda in the packet?
Two F.
Two F, sorry, I forgot, we have so many sections. With regards to appointing a city council member to attend Board of Trustees' meetings as an observer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero, so that has been removed. All right. Are there any other proposed changes before we call for, um, a motion on the amended?
Not just one nineteen D.
Yeah, um, the, yeah, well, it is, it's now amended because it takes out that, yeah. So we have a motion for the amended one nineteen D.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amended ordinance one nineteen D.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Don't all jump at once. Who wants to claim that one? Councilmember Van Orme? All right, so any further discussion among the council?
Quick question.
Councilmember Cargill, go ahead.
Since this is, I, I thought I heard you say earlier, Mayor, that since this is a second read ordinance, we have public pen- or public comment.
Yeah, we do that on second read ordinances and resolutions.
Right, so before we go to a final vote, okay.
Yep. All right, any other comments? All right, not hearing any. Um, this is, uh, last opportunity for, for citizen comments with regards to the amended one ordinance number one nineteen D. So again, same rules as before, limited to three minutes. I'll keep the time. Please state your name, if you're a Liberty Lake resident or not, um, and then I will go ahead and start the timer. And be cogn- yeah, so we're.
Give me a minute warning, Mayor.
Yes, if you just wa- make sure you watch me or do.
Thirty-second more, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Brad Hamlet, a resident of the city, um, at, on Setler Drive, also Library Board Chair. Uh, this is a very disappointing day for me personally. I have many, many, many thoughts, but I'm going to reference a few comments that have been made that this is a result of citizens' vote. Um, I hate to inform you, Mr. Cargill, but you're missing one of the citizens' votes, one person to be seated here in order to be able to say that firmly. I also have, um, if somebody uses my words, I would like them to be accurate. And, uh, Mr. Spencer, you did not use my words accurately, and in referring to me as saying that I did not know who advised us. Um, and your words about, um, uh, our city council advising us against talking to you guys, totally inaccurate. He advised us that, that, that the ordinance gave us the authority to make that decision. That's what the advice that was given. So if you're going to use those terms, use them correctly, please. It wasn't against not talking to you guys. All right? So, we are here, and you're going to vote this through. Fine. Councilman Foyer, your attempt is to make it so that we will talk, dialogue. There's been no dialogue, and councilmen will say that they bent over backwards, or you've bent over backwards. I would say that we all tried very hard, but there were a lot of issues that had to be resolved. And it was just after the veto, done. But the mayor suggested we try to get together again. I will commend Councilmember Kurtz for making that attempt. And she worked hard, and she made it pointed to come to us and talk to us about one way to make this a little bit more palatable to our citizens. You have heard citizens over and over and over and over again.
Thirty seconds.
Sorry, as, thank you. And as legislators of our community, it's your responsibility to represent those people. You have failed your duty to represent. Sorry. You have failed your duty to represent those people. No matter what you say, no matter how you say it, you have failed to represent the people who have been talking to you for the last nine months. Pardon me, year.
Okay, next.
Bob West, Spokane Valley, one block outside of the Liberty Lake boundary. What part of Councilmember Kurtz's graphic does a majority of you not understand? It was telling. She showed you that no departments, let me repeat, none are under what you are asking for with this ordinance. I believe I read today, there is no municipality in the state of Washington that has control over a library like you are asking. This is nothing more than a power grab for power and control. Chris Cargill should recuse himself, and I am confident he will not, based upon the new information that I presented this evening. This is on account of one book and one person and an extremist base. The majority of citizens are against this ordinance. By passing it, you are not representatives of the majority. It will be no shock that this will be a five to two vote. I'm confident of that. You are giving the finger to your citizens? Shame if it passes and becomes your legacy.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any, one more?
Mayor, we're bumping up to ten thirty.
Okay, do we have a, a motion to extend?
Motion to extend to eleven o'clock.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to extend to eleven o'clock. Do we, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are officially extended to eleven o'clock.
Dustin Priest, here we go again. Uh, few comments on based on what you all have said. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, you said you wanted to put a bullet point to this to end it. I can't think of a better way than having to included that amendment, so that was utter fail. Uh, Mr. Cargill, you said that you include that language on the time that it was sent to the mayor, and that you bent over backwards to include it then. I see no downside, is why not to include it now then? Um, individual over there, that individual right there, you, sir, I don't know your name, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. I don't understand also why you didn't be for this. You say it's policy language, oh, it's not. In the ordinance, to me, that is a easy way to wheel your way out politically. Um, there is no downside to this language, except to steal power from you guys and keep it, keep it from us. What was the downside of including that amendment? Besides you guys retaining power? To potentially ban a book in the future. Also, I still don't understand why this ordinance is necessary if you trust your Board of Trustees. Again, except for a power grab. It's very disappointing, very disappointing. That being said, we've heard your words that there is no possibility of a book ban in the future, so why include this? Democracies never used the language before that, you know, prevent things in the future. Why should we start now? That's sarcasm. That being said, we have heard your words, saying there will never be a book ban, and we are watching, and we are listening. Keep that in mind for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, because I thought that everyone had cancellation.
No, we, we, there's kind of no time to hand things in, so.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you all. School boards are eliminating education. They don't want people to learn about their world, the people in it, the people who helped structure it, structure it. But here's the rub, and here's what we need to do. We have over nine thousand voters registered in this city. Only thirty-two hundred came out to vote. Only thirty-two hundred came out to vote. Why is that? It's because they have no idea what their government's doing because of their busy schedules. So they don't come because they're not sure what's going on, and so they don't vote because they're wondering who do they vote for. We voted for people who have a name only recognized, that have done nothing positive for this community. We voted people who want to destroy and burn down this community. We voted for people by appointment because we're looking for somebody who has institutional memory. Institutional memory on what? Here's our charge. Our charge is after today, that we stopped sitting down, all of us registered voters here, and we start now putting our boots on the ground, helping people understand why we vote, what we vote, and who we vote for. No more handsome suits, no more girl handshakes and kissing the baby. That time is over. We've got to move as if our life depended on it. Because one day, people like me, or people who are redheads, or people who walk with a limp, won't be privileged to do anything, anywhere in this America. Liberty Lake is better than that. We owe ourselves all of that. Let's mobilize when we should, not for harm, but for good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Atkins.
So I've, I've heard, um, I've heard the argument since evening about, you know, why make any of these amended changes, you know, because of, of, you know, the power that the library Board of Trustees has, but, um, just the fact that this even started with changing who has final approval on the policy and the procedures in the library. And, you know, I've been called a warrior for the First Amendment, and that's okay. I'm going to own that, because I'm okay with it. And, you know, the First Amendment is the constitutional right to free speech and intellectual freedom, and it applies also to local governments by way of the Fourteenth Amendment. And I've said this before, you know, in the five sweetest words in the First Amendment is, "Congress shall make no law." The council members who are pushing for the change in control of the library never ever address, I never have heard a single one of you speak to the First Amendment, not, not a one. And I don't understand why. And the only thing I can assume about this is that either you do not understand it, you don't believe it, or it is inconvenient to your point of view. And you know what? In the words of Supreme Court Justice Anthony Kennedy, "The First Amendment is often inconvenient, but that is beside the point. Inconvenience does not absolve the government of its obligation." We all know which way this is going to go. But I just want you to know that in the future, the time is going to come when you're going to come after the collection policy of a library. And when you do, I will be standing there, fighting to protect it, and I will call on any and all of the people of Liberty Lake who have spoken so clearly about this whole thing. And I do not think that I will be standing in a field alone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody else? Looks like we have one more.
Kevin Wilding, been resident of Liberty Lake since 2003. And I want to applaud those members of the city council that I voted for, because I live in this city, and my kids are in this city, that are trying to make sure that they're protected. And they're being vilified for just passing something to give them control, which we vote for, so that we have a say in what goes on in functions of the city. And I am grateful for that, that they're, you know, choosing to make it so that my voice is heard. And I don't see anything that they've said that they want to do, when you brought up, you know, they don't, um, control any other part of the city and stuff. And, uh, where, uh, Councilmember Spencer said that maybe they should, you know. You, you talked in your amendment about having something that is uniform with the entire state of Washington. I don't live in Seattle for a reason. You know, what happened there during COVID? The city council had to step in and help the police department that was getting defunded to try and clean up the mess. And it's still there. I was there today, that's why I missed the first half of this meeting, because I was working in Seattle, driving home. They destroyed that beautiful city. I live here, I love Liberty Lake. I don't want to see it destroyed, so I want to have my voice heard. My voice isn't heard if the library can do whatever they want. It's the Wild West right now with libraries. They're getting thrown books that no one even considered five years ago, and their wildest dreams would be thrown at our youth. I would like, if there is any oversight, to be able to vote on something like that. But you guys haven't, they haven't even talked about banning anything, and I'm not for that. But I would like it regulated by somebody that actually answers to me. And so I thank you, city council members, for standing up for me and my rights and, and, um, doing what I voted you in for. So thank you.
All right, we have one more?
I'm Harvey Brown. I do not live in Liberty Lake. I live in an area between Liberty Lake and the city of Spokane Valley. At some point, you guys will be fighting over who gets to, uh, annex us. And I've kind of leaned towards Liberty Lake. I think the city of Spokane Valley has a few more screwballs, but after tonight, I have some doubts.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more.
I still feel this, I'm Sue Hamblitt, I'm part of the community as well. Um, I live here in Liberty Lake. I just would like to say that I really like it when professionals are in charge of making decisions for. And if a professional is a doctor, I like my doctors to make, help me make decisions for me. If an educator helps make good decisions for students, our librarians help make good decisions as to what is in the library, and they also know where it needs to be, so it's most effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Rosemarie Bazire, and I too do not live in Liberty Lake. But what I see going on here is apparent that some of your council members do need to read our U.S. Constitution. And what I understand of our government is that the federal government is at the top. Their laws and our U.S. Constitution has precedence over everybody else at lower levels of government. However, it is stated in the Constitution that what is not allowed to the federal government goes to the states. There's also a portion, when you get down to the state government. Those of you, there, there's, the ones that seem to be confusing this whole library issue seem to be the ones that either misunderstand or refuse to understand, or want to do away with our entire system of government. And I can't understand what the benefit, what do they have to replace it with? And my understanding is, when you go into a city government, you are under county government. You are still under the state of Washington laws. So when somebody made a comment, he is not in the state of Washington, but yes, you are. Washington state only has those things that is not stated in the U.S. Constitution that takes precedence over that state. But all states, if it doesn't state in the Constitution, then it goes to the state. Now, what we're dealing with here is very much constitutional, all the way to the federal level, of our people's rights. And what you are doing, what I see, what you are doing by not allowing the library the freedom and the liberty to decide what is appropriate in the library, so that everyone has an access to read what they want.
Sorry, time's up. Thank you.
That's going against my liberties.
Time's up, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, not, um, hearing any further. Um, we will go ahead and move to a vote of the council, um, after which I will most likely have a statement. Um, so, um, we'll go ahead, and all of those in favor of approving the amended ordinance 119D, please say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands. Okay, and those, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion passes five-two. So, um, just to make myself clear, um, obviously, with a five-two vote, um, any veto, should I decide to do, that would be overridden. So I do know, I will not spend the people's time and money and staff resources on that. However, I do have another option. In my mind, you know, it's not even my mind, an ordinance is a policy document. So if Councilmember Kurtz's amendment is a policy, then there is no better place to confirm each and every one of your commitments to upholding the local, state, and federal laws. That commitment cannot be restated enough. So I do have the option of not signing the ordinance. That will not prevent it from going into effect, unfortunately. However, I can exercise the right to not sign it, um, to reaffirm my position on this whole topic. So, that being said, um, we are now up to emergency ordinances. We don't have any. Oh, gosh, we still have two more ordinances to go. Oh, my gosh, sorry. Oh, boy, I was hoping, uh, we have two more ordinances. Second read of ordinance 299.
Ordinance number 299, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting the 2024 through 2029 capital facilities plan.
Okay, if you guys can keep the chatter down, that'd be great. Um, all right, we have a motion, um, for the, um, ordinance 299.
I move ordinance 299.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kennedy. All right, so is there any discussion or questions on the capital facilities plan? I'm not seeing any. Um, that being said, so again, we're at second read ordinance. Is there anybody who has a comment for the public, um, on ordinance 299 with regards to the capital facilities plan? Okay, I do not see any, so we'll go ahead into the council and take a vote. So those in favor of approving ordinance 299, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. We now have a capital facilities plan for 2024 to 2029, and we can move on to second read ordinance 300.
Ordinance number 300, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024, appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established positions.
We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 300.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second by Councilmember Dunn. Any questions or comments on our budget? Kyle's here, in case there are. Not seeing any, all right? Any question, any comments from the public with regards to the budget, um, for 2024? All right, not seeing or hearing any, we'll move to a vote. Those in favor of approving ordinance 300, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-one. All right, now, we have no emergency ordinances. We have introduction of upcoming agenda items. We will be adding for, um, start and finish, uh, in Q1, our review of 119, which would then be E, regards to, um, any clarifications on that with regards to funding. Um, we have a couple other things on here. And I know, um, Mayor Protem, I know you've got a couple things on there, um, and I think we, we did have, I think Councilmember Cargill just, um, jumped into, to, uh, champion the commission appointment process last meeting, I believe.
I, um, no, I, well, I'm fine to do that one, um, but I think what they assigned me was the, the North River, um, north side of the river.
Okay, we just didn't have a name on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever that one was called.
Yeah, okay, we'll do that. Um, so, um, so we have, uh, Mayor Protem, you have the Flock Safety Workshop as well. Um, I'm assuming that was with regards to HOA participation, so we can, we can leave that on there. Is there anybody, um, who wants to champion that in twenty, early 2024? Just the discussion. If not, we can just keep, we can keep it on there unassigned and make sure we get it on the agenda. And then the commission appointment process, Councilmember Cargill, did you say?
Sure.
Step up on that one, okay. So aside from that, I don't have anything else, so does anybody else have anything else, anything to add to the future workshop agenda? Yes?
I, I guess in, in light of the, uh, conversation that we had tonight regarding the fact that we're essentially not, uh, doing our job as far as, uh, policy oversight, um, I, I think we should probably start taking a look at where we should be having that oversight so that we make sure and do our job.
Yeah, well, you know, and, and, you know, obviously, we can have that discussion. Just, just remember that, you know, the, the main policy that governs everything else is the budget, which you guys obviously do control. Um, so I, there's, I definitely, there are probably definitely things that we need, we do need to look out, but other things I'm sure you do not want to touch. So, so, you know, obviously, we've got the, a good, good example is the PD. You know, they, they have their own, um, policies and procedures by reference to, um, other agencies, so they don't go off and make their own, they, they have other agencies. But we can definitely put that discussion on the calendar.
Have the ordinance, revenue, every ordinance.
Yeah, I already said that, yep.
Yeah, she mentioned.
Yep. Okay, all right, thanks. We have a, a pro, uh, approved budget, and so we will have, um, our final meeting of the year on the nineteenth. Yes, and comments? Really, I keep trying to adjourn us, and I forgot, citizen, you know, there's a third page here. So are there any further citizen comments before we adjourn? I'm trying really hard here, guys. Nobody? All right, no, our executive session had been moved. There are no, uh, is there nobody opposing? We will go ahead and adjourn. We are adjourned.